Everybody turn your microphones on, shut your cell phones off if you would, or put them on. Right in front of your abuse or something. Time being six o'clock, I will call the meeting to order. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America.
Very good.
I want your stand. I want your back in the visible, liberty and justice for all. Vote, vote please. Stan?
Here.
Joe?
Here.
John?
Here.
Gary?
Here.
Gary? Here. All right, item number three, does any commissioner have a reason to abstain for a financial or non-financial conflict of interest?
I do not. No.
I don't have any. Can you hear me?
Yes, Gary.
Okay, yeah, can you hear me?
Yes, sir.
No, I don't have any conflict, okay.
All right, thank you. I do not either. Moving on to item number four is approval of agenda. I would like to add as five A, an update from our Office of Emergency Management, Korschle. So that'll be on five A. Does any other commissioner have additions or changes? Oh, just general update on COVID.
Move approval with seven.
I'll second that one.
I have a motion by Healy, a second by Clemish, to approve the amended agenda. Further discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Gary, did you want to vote?
Yeah, aye.
Thank you. All opposed, nay. Motion carries five zero. The amended agenda is approved. So at this time, I will open the floor to public comment. Would anyone care to make a public comment?
I would.
All right, Gary, go ahead. You are the only person that has shown interest.
Okay, I just want to talk about next week, November 11th, Veterans Day. Most everybody knows that World War I was supposed to be the war to end all wars, and it ended on the 11th month, 11th day and the 11th hour. But unfortunately, it's not been the last of the wars. It seems like we almost have endless wars. World War II, Korea, Vietnam, and all kinds of skirmishes in between Iraq now and Afghanistan, and 19 years in Afghanistan. So anyway, just want to reiterate that, and then also, I've said it before, about the 22 veterans that commit suicide every day. That continues on every day, been going on for years, and I've been working on it for, well, close to five years now. I've been trying to inform people, and there's some people that tell me, yep, I know about it. I do 22 pushups every day. Other people do other things. They pray for the time. Some people are completely shocked when I tell them that. I told a guy the other day, and he just couldn't believe me. I said, well, just look it up on your smartphone, and you'll find it. There's plenty of websites about it. So anyway, please pray for those 22 veterans that commit suicide every day. Right now, as of now, there's 60,000 Vietnam veterans that have committed suicide, and that's more than what the casualty rate was between 1959 and 1975, which was 58,479. So it's really a big problem. PTSD, there's all kinds of problems. People, some veterans just don't talk about it. So anyway, that's all I need to say. Please pray for those 22 veterans every day. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Gary. So at this time, public comment is closed. We will move on to item number five, which is approve minutes for October 20 of 2020. Are there any changes to the minutes for that date? If not, I would entertain a motion to approve.
Move. Second.
I have a motion by Kettering, a second by Healy, to approve the minutes for October 20, 2020. Further discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, nay?
Nay.
Motion carries four to one. Item five A, Mr. Kerschle, please come forward.
Evening, everyone. I'm getting ready to get early. I'm not really got a lot of time. But here, I put together kind of a, we'll start with a little power point, I believe, once he's here. But as of a month ago, in October 1, I did some statistics, sorry. Sorry, thank you, buddy. You know, back in October 1 to today, we have had 560,000 cases in county. If you go back, when it started in March, we've actually got more at that time period than we have since the beginning. So our numbers for today, we're at 1,015. So we've gone up quite a bit. We still have some recovered cases, but it's six tips and so on and so forth. I just wanted to give you a little heads up. The other sheets behind us are some copies of the PPE that the county requires for our ambulance, jail, our staff, search and rescue, stuff like that to have. We're still acquiring some stuff as time goes on, and hopefully here in the next week or so, we should be done. But I just wanted to make sure everyone knows that we're still getting it. And then the very last sheet is the, our last couple of sheets are kind of like, who got what? If you could see as we started out, how it's allocated, how much they got, and so forth. The last paper that I gave you, the clean, the clean yeah, the Clean Space Mask, we actually ordered these for the sheriff's office and for the EMS unit. It was something we could get by using these a lot more. It's a lot more safer, it's a lot more handier, especially when we're doing code calls, and also like the jail that are doing boating. I don't exactly where children are going to use them all, but instead of using a mask every time you got somebody or do something with somebody, a surgical mask, use a mask. These will be here, I think, next week, 17, we're supposed to see them. They're very handy tool. They got a couple of extra filters. It'd be really nice for our crews that really need to use them on that aspect. And now that they're reusable as well, so you can wash them, clean the masks. We got a couple different mask sizes, if you will, for different people. Because the main unit can be used over and over by whoever, but the masks you need. I do know a game bill and Luster bill, I've applied for that through their parents' money, to get them for their first responders. So I do know that's happening also. But other than that, I keep continuing having our Monday morning, our Monday noon task force meetings, beginning with all the people on top, our businesses, the hospital, the clinics, making sure everything's going fine, and stuff like that. So I wanted to give you a kind of an update. I encourage everyone to wear masks if you can. I know there's some controversy on that, but I do know that it so. Questions? I want to give you a quick update on the PPE and what we're doing and where we're at. I want to do a public comment, just a few five minutes to get out of here.
Do you have any more flu clinics that you want to announce at this point?
Not really at all. Okay, not even one thing. Thank you for going down. We were, we did the flu, the flu clinics, we had two different days, we had two days and a Saturday, and we did, we ran over 300 in those two days overall with Dr. Piafa, my crew, and his clinics to different areas because we're over 500. Oh, that was very, for us, it was very successful. We still got some left over, we figured out we're going to send them back, we can do another one. All that, the Saturday one was a little chilly. We had to set up cats and some heaters, so keep everybody warm. The big thing was to keep the needles warm, because full needles, people are all so, and I was not giving a chance. So any questions or any comments? That never felt too well for us.
So just to tag on to that Clean Space Equipment, Steve over at the ambulance said they had 223 calls in October, which is, the last time we had that many calls was 2017. We had 220. So they really, of the calls, 30% of them are COVID related. So that equipment makes it much safer, because they are getting exposed.
Our crew are getting, crews are getting close to it.
We can keep our people healthy, we can help keep our people healthy.
Right, because if we start losing those crews, then we start
We're in a pinch. So that was one of the drivers for that technology.
Plus the mask, bottom of the box, a bunch of these. I think all in all, with the eight, that's it. Eight for EMS, four for the sheriff, and four for the search and rescue, who else, ambulance, so that would be eight. 16 units was 22,000.
And that included the
$1,000, and that was including extra filters, extra masks.
The curving stations.
And not any solutions to clean the units for a period of time.
Any other questions?
When you take it, if somebody would get it, and they would be out for two or three weeks, that would be a lot, over 200,000 dollars.
Correct, yeah. And we still have that facility, that somebody would get set, a place to take them, and the department has sort of the departments about the cleanup. It would be my department, Steve's department, fire department, county. But we still have that place if people have COVID, I think, versus COVID.
And it says in the deal, these have a three-year warranty, so they're going to last quite a while.
St. South Dakota actually bought two for every EMS service in the state. That's how we found out about them, and the state did all the whole marketing up. The research behind them. Anything else?
No. Thank you.
Good. Thank you. Any questions? This time over?
Thank you.
Okay.
Moving on to item number six, auditor, and we have several things to go through, so let's start with the claims. Any questions on the claims before I entertain a motion to approve?
Move approval. Second.
I have a motion by Healy, a second by Kettering, to approve the claims as submitted. Further discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, nay?
I'm going to vote nay.
Motion carries four to one. October payroll.
Move approval.
Second. I have a motion by Kettering, a second by Clemish, to approve the October payroll. Further discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, nay? Gary, did you want to vote?
Yeah, you didn't hear me the first time? Yeah, I voted yes.
Oh, I'm sorry, did not hear you. Thank you, Gary. So the motion passes five to zero.
That's okay.
Next on the agenda is the 2020 general election canvas. I believe the auditor has put information out before us. Any questions?
Move approval of the canvas.
Second.
I have a motion by Clemish, a second by Swenson, to approve the canvas for the November 5, 2020 election. Further discussion. All in favor say aye.
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 Aye. All opposed, nay? Motion carries five zero. Do you need us all to sign this, or just me? No, everybody. And Gary, you'll have to come in and sign.
Oh, sure, sure.
Or, or, surface, okay. All right, so I will pass this down.
I have a companion chair, one on, I think, like, take a moment, and I got an auditor's office, a particular amount of volunteers. They just seem to do a job, especially with other ballots.
Okay. In a very late night, for sure.
Not as late as some others. Sign all of these, oh, two.
Next on the agenda is to schedule the last meeting of the year. Did you have a requested date for this?
It'll be Monday or Tuesday, I mean.
So it's Monday the 28th of December, Tuesday 29th, is that right? I don't have a calendar.
It's Monday.
Yeah, 28th is Monday.
So does anyone have a preference of days?
Tuesday.
Tuesday the 29th?
Aye.
Do you want this in the morning, Patty, or? You want nine or 10, or 9:30?
I think 10.
10 o'clock. So let's do Tuesday, December 29th at 10 o'clock will be our last meeting of the year. So next on our agenda is a budgeted cash transfer. So Patty, did you need the 1.9 million or the 1.5 million?
The 1.5.
Okay. So we need a motion, and this is a budgeted cash transfer. We planned on doing this. We need a motion for a budgeted cash transfer, 1.5 million dollars into the Road and Bridge Fund.
Move.
I have a motion by Kettering, a second by Healy, to transfer 1.5 million dollars to the Road and Bridge Fund. Further discussion. All in favor say aye.
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 All opposed, nay? Motion carries five zero. We have an amendment to a 2019 snow slash flood event. So that should be in your packet. The initial agreement reimbursement payment is only for what the initial repair cost estimate was on the damage inspection report. Once we receive a review, there's a couple of numbers for the flood events, we will know the exact eligible cost for each damaged site. So this has to do with the damage we received in 2019 from flooding.
I think it was just saying, yeah, that's
So we need a motion to approve the amendment to the agreement, and it's amendment number one to agreement number 614952.
Okay, what is, what does this do, this amendment? This is setting, this is
Yeah, yes, 614952.
Did you want to
Joe, were you going to make it? You're right, no.
You go ahead. Make a motion to approve amendment one to
It's amendment, amendment number one to agreement number.
Agreement number 614952, second.
I have a motion by Healy and a second by Clemish to approve the amendment. Further discussion. All in favor say aye.
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 Aye. Aye.
All opposed, nay? Motion carries five zero.
Is there another site that you do, the 614952 and 614992?
Oh.
And the other one? 52.
Mine both have the same number on them.
Oh, and the front page, it said, I wanted to touch base, yada, yada, sites, 614952 and ERD 2019, collective damage site, agreement, 614992. If, on the first page, it has two different agreement numbers?
Yeah, it does, Dan, but she's only got one, so let's just hang with this one now, and if for some reason he forgot to send one, we'll do it on our next meeting.
Are these time sensitive?
I don't
Okay.
If anything, it'll just delay our payments for two weeks.
I just saw that this number was different.
Yeah, fifth one.
All right.
All right. We will move on to right-of-way. So we have an application for occupancy for Midcontinent in section 16 of township 93, range 56, and that is off of Deer Boulevard, Boulevard, sorry. And then I believe we've got a second one down below for Northwestern Energy, so let's take these one at a time. Any questions on the Midcontinent Communications Application to do work in the right-of-way?
Sure.
I have a motion by Clemish, a second by Kettering, to approve the application for Midcontinent Communications to work in the right-of-way off of Deer Boulevard. Further discussion. All in favor say aye.
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 All opposed, nay? Motion carries five zero. So that's the Midcontinent, and then I believe the next one's for Northwestern Energy. Get down to it here. It is for section nine, township 93, and the range says five, I believe it's supposed to be 55. I looked it up right on the map. So this is off of Whiting Drive.
Move approval.
Second.
I have a motion by Clemish, a second by Healy, to approve the application for right-of-way for Northwestern Energy off of Whiting Drive. Further discussion. All in favor say aye.
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 All opposed, nay? Motion carries five zero. And that is all we have for right-of-ways. All right, next on our agenda, last item for the auditor, Kleats Bridge Big PE Work Agreement. Are there any questions on this application? And this is part of our five-year plan, and it is in the budget for 2021. I have a motion by Kettering and a second by Clemish to approve the notice of award for the 2021 preliminary engineering bridge improvement grant. Further discussion.
Yeah, a little further discussion. I know the state is helping us a lot, and I give them some 80% cost share on this. But these bridges over the James River, I would recommend that we do project assistance with the James River, because we have funded a lot of these projects. And it's not, it's not much, a thousand dollars, but who does that? So I think it's something to look into. Thanks.
Great. Any other discussion on this? So I have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
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 All opposed, nay? Motion carries five zero. All right, that closes out item number six on our agenda. We are now at item number seven. Zoning, open meeting violation complaint, Mr. Bruce Jensen, sir.
Bruce Jensen, I'm here tonight, real brief. I turned the findings of the open meeting laws, and I talked to Rob today. I talked to Steve Blair and Peter, and Rob don't want to, it's conflict of interest, so Steve's going to pick some attorney to look at these things, and as I looked over the mission statement, I just kind of you guys wrote this up. Did you get any help from anybody? Or did you guys write this up, the mission statement?
We had public input.
So you did, just by yourself, right?
We asked for public input.
Yeah, okay. But I like to read one thing here. It's supposed to be trust, unity, safety, and collaboration. And what I'm saying is you brought this up, and you got it, okay, that's fine. But what I'm saying is you expect all of your employees to go with this when you guys don't go with it? You had an open meeting, which the public didn't know, no transparency, that's what all this says, and I think it's pathetic. We heard that from the three of us, never met. We got it on tape.
Where?
It was taped in here.
Do you have proof that three of us sat down together and did something?
You taped it, didn't you?
I'm not involved.
You turned the tape on, that's what I was told.
I get, we never met together, the three of us.
Well, that's why I heard, that's what we said was taped.
Hearing something is much different than an allegation.
You three.
They said it was taped, who is they?
I heard Hillary came in, started it, and left.
Who did you hear this from, is what I'm asking, Mr. Nelson. Because you have some serious allegations with Zero backing up right now, and it'd be nice to at least hear you explain where you're coming from.
I heard it from the office. It was, it was, and I remember her.
The office said that, out of the three, the honor's office told you, did they call you?
No, I asked about it, because they said it was, they said it was taped.
So you came in and asked if we met, and they taped it.
Because they said, any meeting, any public meeting, has to be taped.
The three of us.
That's what, just the three of us. That's what I heard, it is the tape. Oh, well, I'll find it, they told me. I hold it there, because that's what they told.
I bet you won't.
Oh, whatever. But I'm just saying that stuff, whatever, you're making some pretty serious allegations. Well, then it isn't taped, then. Okay. But that's what I was told.
Well, they're lying.
So, yeah, somebody's lying, but this mission statement, you guys lie all the time on this, because you're not transparent. You don't confront people, what you're doing.
That's a little bitch.
Well, we'll see what the attorney looks at, we'll see what he says, okay? Because it's filed here, so whatever Peter says, whatever, if I, but I don't want them doing it, because you don't want conflict of interest. Oh, I, yeah, a person told me that it was on the government, it was on the computer. He saw the, uh, he, who's that person? I'm not going to say it right now, but I'll, I'll talk to him. I got him on.
But I can, he should be able to scrub it down.
Okay.
That's any
I hope, I hope you're not lying, I hope, I hope you're sure of it. Okay, I'm fine. I, I, I agree with you, it is well, whatever. If you didn't do it, you didn't do it. If you did, it didn't work. That's all I'm saying. I'm just saying, I'm not accusing you. If that's what I was told.
Yes, you're right.
So much more. But all I'm saying, this mission statement, big joke, when you commissioners, don't need to you're not transparent, you're not in front of the public, you do a lot of things. One of the things you do, you can close doors, you call on the you get on the computer, talk back to the party, I'm not saying, but I'm asking.
Is there anything wrong with that? Three can cooperate, I mean, the three of us, but we can get on Three can cooperate. I mean, the three of us, but we can get on the computer at night and seven, you know, the meeting one.
How come you, how come you left the other two on this, uh, on the open meeting? How come we didn't have a?
What are you talking about?
I'm talking about the special meeting you had.
We didn't have one. I told you.
Oh, yes, you did.
So, Mr. Jensen, at this point, unless you have some actual proof of tape, I think we're done here.
Okay, that's fine.
Thank you.
I'll get back.
Go away. Okay.
Thank you.
Who wrote your article in the paper? That was well written.
Uh.
Who wrote your article in the paper? That was well written.
It was well written. I thought a lot about it.
Thank you.
For doing it.
Okay. Yeah, really.
So at this time, we are moving on to item number eight. Which is the MSAC contribution request update. Ms. Stachow, please come forward. Thank you.
Thank you for giving us some time tonight. I know if you can help. It was about years ago, I guess, that we were here. Talking about asking for a contribution. Phase, just to put some in the nutshell, we had. And this is. The current project management plan. That document is a living document. It will be updated as the process moves along. But we didn't complete phase one, which. Basically, if you want to characterize it, it's the study of the study. To determine what tasks we want to attach in phase two. The step, um, the backup of these steps. There are several stakeholders involved, cities, counties, and others. Wanting to develop an action plan or settlement management plan for the reservoir and upstream. We're really looking at a large area from Fort Randall, Van, and Compa. Because we really want a full picture of the benefits and costs associated with settlement management. And not doing anything. Because in the past, whenever tragedy has been looked at in person, settlement expectations. The general response is it's too expensive. There are enough benefits from these actions. So if we get a more holistic view of this problem. We're hoping that brings economic feasibility into the picture. And part of phase two is looking at the application of these two economic models. Consider the cost of benefit to lead instead of payment. And then that economic analysis will be applied to three threshold scenarios that the court already has developed. It'll just be brought up to current dollars. One of the reasons it took a while to get to this point. There are several. Twenty nineteen, of course, there was flooding. Twenty twenty, we had COVID. And then the first draft of phase two feedback that with a much higher price tag. Right now, we're at two hundred and fifteen thousand, six hundred and sixty-seven. Initially being in closer to the three hundred thousand dollar. And it is a fifty fifty cost share between the local stakeholders and the core engineers. And to bring that cost down. We said people really aren't excited about flushing right now, so. We took that out and looking at further engineering and more, more investment in that at this point. And our consultant also has some. Turbination about settlement collectors and we present to others too that. One of the problems is you can collect the settlement of what you think. We're not totally abandoning the idea of settlement collectors. I think whole. Flushing and settlement collectors will be talked about at this alternative we came up with. That's in phase two in the solution workshop. That we bring together various settlement management experts from around the country. Including federal agencies, the board, and independent experts, hopefully one from Florida, so. The other consultant we've been working with and others. With that workshop, we're wanting to explore a full spectrum of possible solutions. Thinking of things that haven't been looked at yet. There's new technologies all the time, different ideas. The Bureau of Recreation has recently sponsored a contest across the nation to get ideas on what to do. That just closed at the end of last month. I haven't heard what the results are yet. But there's more of a concerted effort around the nation to do something. With the ninety thousand reservoirs around the country that are facing this situation. I guess where we're at on funding. Back in two thousand and eighteen. September fifteenth. On the commission here that approved ten thousand dollars towards development of the settlement management plan. We knew it was going to be a multi-phase effort. So with phase two, we've approached stakeholders with contributing thirty-eight percent of what they originally pledged. Towards the whole plan. So that would be thirty-eight hundred. And we're hoping to get started. EMSAC already signed the cost share agreement for phase two. It's still a work in progress in channels of the core of engineers. But we're hoping that it gets started January one. And it could take approximately eighteen months to get through phase two. And. With other stakeholder pledges. We're getting approximately twenty-three thousand and another ten thousand that's already in DC. And EMSAC is positioned and ready to contribute fifty thousand. So we're still left with a balance of twenty-five thousand, which we. Have several grant applications out and will still be approaching other state entities in Nebraska. And so to make up that difference. But tonight, I guess, we do have an agreement that we'd like you to consider. I hope that you have happy.
But it takes it through the house and I don't know what's in the. Remember, remember, Adam of agreement?
Yeah.
Yeah. That's in the.
Yep.
Okay. Yes, ma'am, we do have it in our package.
Okay. I'm just hanging it down on paper. What's your pledge was in twenty thirteen? Back then, we were talking about section eleven seventy-nine and eighty. In the course of this process, section twenty-two fighting assistance states is actually. The route we're going initially, but. That allows enough flexibility that we're looking to eleven seventy-nine, spirit of that, and doing a section twenty-two effort. And it just. Stakes the background. And we also ask if there's someone in the office or Yankton County that we could. Look to if we want to use the county's logo and any obligations about this separately. From this under fourth form order.
Is your logo like a part of it?
Like, uh, just an informational file of who's all joining together in the separate.
Who's responsible?
Yeah.
And the agreement is asking for a specific name of individual or job title. In order to review what it would be used for. That's in number four.
I, I could, I would long to do that. You're gonna be.
The only challenge, what I will say is the only challenge of an individual name is if this goes on past our terms. Then. We're no longer on the board and have the authority to do it, so a job title may be better. Oftentimes, it goes to the chair. Whoever serves this chair would be authorized to review. Or the auditor's office. Are there?
I need to push her head down.
I didn't hear you at all.
Does anyone have questions on the agreement or the pledge that was made on September eighteenth to twenty eighteen? It was action one eight three five six C. Pledging ten thousand dollars toward these efforts. And essentially, you're asking for the thirty-eight percent of that.
Right. And the agreement would have a ten thousand dollar figure. And indicate that sixty-two percent would go for a space three. This is a work in progress, so if we did have space two and stakeholders don't like the result.
Surely. Who makes that decision?
Well, this, it wasn't spelled out specifically in this, but. We're trying to remain open to all stakeholder input. We realize that there's stakeholders that aren't. Funding the effort as well. So. I guess. That's one thing we could have spelled out in another agreement that was stakeholders and we just haven't gotten it.
Did you, did you read the agreement?
I did. I'm just, I'm just saying.
Certainly. I was on the settlement nation. Years ago and. I haven't seen much of anything happen. Almost zero. At the top, but they're gonna take millions and millions of yards of dirt out of that, put it someplace. Cost gravity, but I just don't see how. We're gaining resolve. But we looked at other avenues that could be developed, such as tourism and so forth, that we could use that area and pick something up rather than spend money on them. Rather than anything else.
Sure. Well, I think part of what we hope this addresses as well is. Just what are going to be the impacts of the oil on when can be expected for impact. One of the items, it's not a big item, but identifying beneficial uses for settlement. And I think there's two kinds of scenarios, the big picture of trying to get settlement downstream where it used to go. And sustaining the reservoir. And then there's the other side of things where you're trying to minimize impacts and. You know, with water intakes and just keep. Keep like moving for people around here. So I think that's something they can certainly address in the solutions workshop is what are other things that we can do to. Learn to live with certain aspects of it, I guess. We just don't want it to be. This road's gonna flood, so we're gonna raise it so many feet and just always reacting to the impact. Trying to be more proactive and. Lessening sediment coming into the system.
I'd love to have you do that. That's, that's the greatest thing possibly you can do. It's the kind of habits.
I think there are things happening sometimes that are hard to quantify, but. It's just, it, it does sound like an insurmountable problem, but. I, in the last five years, I would say I've seen just more experts in different agencies coming together saying something, we need to have some kind of plan. And this is what we're trying to do, to have some kind of. View forward. We've never envisioned all the settlement being removed out of the lake that's already there. But maybe there's a way to manage it, manage it, move it. Minimize flooding in certain areas. Keep the water intakes open. And just. What, what are we, what can we expect, I guess, in years from now? I guess we know what will happen if we don't try, so. This is. We're trying to get more answers and really. We can't look at it the same way we have the last hundred years, so. This is one way of trying to get them to look at it in a different way, like cycle management and a different economic model, but just as is covered at all in the past.
Same, was it twenty nineteen, you know, your meeting in Nebraska? I attempted to ask, you know, Don, I share your frustration. It seems like not a lot has been done, but I, I really think. A good plan has been put in place and. This is one of the worst sedimentation problems in the nation and. It hasn't been addressed before and would, unfortunately, we're the poster child. And if you look at Niagara and Springfield. How that has changed that area, I think not for the better. And I, I think it's gonna take some time and effort with it. I think there is gonna be some progress in the future. It's definitely a slow roll, but that's because it's just such an enormous project.
Dan, are you finished? I'd like to say something.
Go ahead.
Hello?
Yeah, go ahead, Gary. We can hear you.
Okay, okay, thank you. Ms. Stockham, I commend you for your, this is a daunting task for you. Especially after like, to the dam broke over there in Niagara. I can't imagine what it's like now. I know we used to take the boat up there and. But anyway, I remember when the dam was built. I was just a kid. My mother had relatives, three relatives that worked on it. And, but what I'm getting to is that. Every year, we try to balance our budget and we take away some money from the senior citizens. We take away from the library. We take away from the airport, trying to balance it. I have a suggestion. I was at the right place at the right time here a few weeks ago. I was at Walmart and Walmart was presenting grants. One of them to the Boys and Girls Club, and I have pictures of that and I can give you some information and their names and everything. The Walmart, not the store, but the corporation gave the Boys and Girls Club five thousand dollars. And I got a picture of the big check. And that's five thousand. Also, the theater received a one thousand dollar contribution grant, or what do you want to call it? And that comes from corporate. And one of the employees told me that every, and I repeat, every nonprofit organization should be going to Walmart Corporation. They're worth like thirty-eight billion or even more than that probably. And, and, and apply for these grants, this money. The money is available. The Boys and Girls Club got five thousand dollars for the, in here in Yankton. The theater got a thousand. And like they said, the employee said, every nonprofit should be going after that money. And like the gals from the Boys and Girls Club told me, this will take the drag off of Yankton County. And, and your task there is, is gonna take a lot of money. Walmart benefits from, from the lake, the employees, the tourists and everything when they shop there. And I'm sure five thousand dollars and a thousand is just a drop in the bucket for what they give out. So please contact Walmart Corporation. And I've contacted them before on issues and they're really friendly, other cooperative, and they get back to you really fast. And that, that would take less of a drain on Yankton County, so please look into that. And, and I wish you the best and we have a beautiful lake out there and, but it's just gradually filling up and. I know one time we were up there and the, the motor was dragging in the, in the sand and that was five, six, seven years ago, so. Okay, well, please go after those grants and thank you very much.
Thank you, Gary.
Might add that if you would like to modify the agreement in any way, you certainly consider that, like. Would you rather we come back before phase two?
Any other comments or questions from the commissioners? Any other comments or questions from the commissioners?
I guess this is one of the things that affects our area and definitely affects Yankton County. And if we're not going to step up and you are here to help out, you shouldn't expect anybody else to. It's $10,000, it's a lot of money, but what's the cost to tourism in the future if we don't try to do something? It's going to be more than that.
I do believe the comment about not committing to that base three is an appropriate comment at this time. The reason I say that is we have previous commissioners commitments to long-term agreements and things change over years. And this might be a two-year project of phase two and things might change. So if we do go ahead and adopt this agreement, I would suggest that we take out that commitment for phase three at this point to leave that for the commission at that time to make that decision. So essentially, it would be $3,800. And if I remember right, our budget for 2021 had $1,000 in it, I think, is what we left in there. So this would essentially be raising it by $2,800 from what we had planned to do before.
Yeah, correct me if I'm wrong, Sandy, a lot of times when you're going to other organizations to raise money, the money that's pledged really helps these organizations. If they say, okay, this organization is pledging this much in these phases, this one is another one, it kind of helps you and especially for cost sharing. So I'm fine with that. How about we just, we leave the agreement and we just put the condition is before phase three, it's paid, she needs to come back to the board for approval. And then that way, it can still stay in here. And if there's a different condition here, when they go into phase three, it's up to them to decide if they're going to spend institutional dollars that's left. That work for everybody? Just put a condition on it.
Here, the conclusion of phase two, I will provide a written request to Yankton County for the 62% for phase three. For Yankton County, must opt in.
Yeah, exactly, exactly.
The money pledged, the $10,000 pledge, it was pledged two years ago.
If you're ready for a motion, I'd make a motion, if you're ready for that.
Yeah, go ahead.
All right, I guess I'd move approval of the memorandum agreement on that condition at the fore. Phase three is implemented, M. Sac will come back to Yankton County with it and request the additional $3,800.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve the agreement with the.
Serious settlementation.
Oh, did you want to, if he's approved and they grant it, that wasn't 3,800, yeah, it's got that in there. So with the qualifier, I'll call it that before phase three, they have to get the current commission's approval. Further discussion on this?
Are we voting on $3,800?
It's $3,800, yes, sir.
Thank you.
And then the point of contact for the use of the logo, do we want the auditor or the chair? Because this document will have to be reprinted with that in here anyway before it can be signed.
I'd say have the chair do it.
Okay, so the chair of the county commission. Further discussion before I do a roll call vote. At this time, let's do a roll call vote.
Dan?
Yes.
Don?
Yes.
Gary?
No, no.
Yes.
Gary?
Yes. Thank you, so when you make those minor changes to Ed and then send it to Abby, that'd be great, thank you. So at this time, we are at item number nine, which is fines for constructing without permits.
Currently, every three years, Yankton County does a flyover for rich geometry and they actually look at the new areas and designate what all the buildings are, what's changed, what's existing, what's new. So on this flyover, our final number of buildings was 24,574. Existing was 22,287, 612 changed, 1,020 renewed, 632 things were demolished, and 23 were ongoing. Now, this includes the city also. So the counting portion of it is we'll probably be looking at a few hundred buildings basically that we'll be reviewing to see whether or not the permits were planned or not. So this item is on the agenda tonight because we were going to discuss the $500 post-construction permit. Apparently, the way it works is anybody that does not get a permit at the time that they were constructed basically pays an extra $500 plus the current $1,000 per thousand plus $50 if it's over $1,000 for their regular building permit. So we just want to make sure before we start sending out letters, that's still the intent of what we want to do and we wanted to have that discussion.
Gary? Gary?
Yes.
Is this in regard to the hog barns?
This is in regard to any structure that was, that was put up during these last three years that didn't have a permit.
Okay, okay, thank you.
So the $500, Gary, where did that come from?
US Commission actually assigned that. That's on the regular schedule.
So a guy goes out, puts an outhouse up in his backyard, and as he goes to come in and get a building permit, he has, he's going to pay an additional $600. Well, anything over.
It's got to be over 120 per piece of the power plant. The reason I was told that, well, I know a few years back, I was told you actually even had a whole house that was built and wasn't on the tax roll for a couple of years, I guess, so.
I don't have a problem with the dollars, you know. It just, I think we have a obligation to the citizens to somehow inform them on a semi-annual basis that there are requests. Do that, and it's up to me.
Well, you know, at least when I started, at the end of last year, and I'm sure you think it will be good again this year, we talked about the whole year of our building permits left, that they're required and all those things. So we're kind of doing an annual notification right now. There has been some talk in the past that maybe we need to look at putting some size up on various levels that like some counties have that building permits are required in the county. But that's another expense I am dealing with, so.
Any other comments for Mr. Vedder?
No, just that we need to give him clear guidance on this if we're going to, if, I would imagine, how many did you say were there?
There's going to be a few hundred that everything has to review.
And out of that few hundred, there probably will be some people coming and, you know, maybe they're right, maybe they're not. But I think it's important we treat everybody fairly. And if we're going to, we have charged some people $500 for Lake Three already. Who came in and if somebody comes in and we don't charge them $500, that I think is not treating people fairly. And so I guess we need to give them clear direction on what we want. If we're going to stick to this fine, if we're not, we need another procedure in place now before it begins. Do you have anything you'd like to add for that, Gary?
Well, Gary's got to step towards this, towards what the county's done and what they already have set up.
So I imagine what will happen is, you know, if you have somebody who doesn't agree and they protest your decision, they'll come to the Board of Adjustment.
Have a few months.
Yeah.
Think of the past, was it anything? Very interesting, they're going to come forward as well, otherwise it's going to be the fine.
It didn't seem like anyone wanted to change this, am I right on that?
So you've got, I guess.
Yeah, we just said we wanted to make sure before we start sending, sending letters, so.
All right.
Anything else?
All right, that was item number nine. So we're going to wait a second. Frasier Kettering has been very kind in giving chairs to the many folks who are standing in the hallway. How many more you need, Don?
We're going to take, ever day four or five. A lot of that, these out there.
Thank you, sir.
One of us stand, I guess.
Thanks, Don, now you don't have to go to the gym tomorrow.
Don, you already got reelected, you know. Quite a few people.
All right, well, we are at item number 10, which requires us to go into Board of Adjustment. Can I have a motion to go into the Board of Adjustment?
No.
I have a motion by Healy and a second by Clemish to go into Board of Adjustment. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, nay, motion carries, we're now in Board of Adjustment. So item number 10, time being 7:03. Peter, is it Rosberg, conditional use permit? Is Peter here? Come on, come on up, sir. So you have an application for conditional use permit, would you please tell us about your project?
I would like to put up a 40 by 48 foot, 12 foot high storage shed in my backyard.
Okay. So your backyard is zoned, low density, and the front yard is high density. Anything unique about the project you'd like to share with the commissioners before I open it up to public comment?
No, just that.
Just put up shed.
Just put up a building, a store, camper, in my place.
Did you previously have a building permit that this would be, that it expired or something?
Due to fundage, yes.
When did you have that building permit?
I think it was probably two months or two years ago.
Two years? Okay, well, sir, I'll have you sit down for a second. Would anyone here tonight like to make a public comment on this conditional use permit? There being none, I have a closed public comment for item number 10. I'll bring it back to the commission for discussion of this application.
I think it's, I think it's a great idea, it's more tax revenue for us and another nice structure out in the country. I know my dad and I both built machine sheds in the past and the only problem is that they're always too small, so. Anyway, good luck.
So I just wanted to learn, we've got two zones here, and which one are we following for the requirements? As I walk through this application.
Yeah, that's basically, well, since it's only barely over one acre far, so that's what we're trying to bring it more into the high density. High density of compliance, so.
We kind of discussed if this was zone today with the software we have versus just drawing line that cuts the parcel, this would have been.
I don't believe anybody spoke in opposition to the past eight to zero.
To address your question, I don't know if we've ever landed on specific, do you treat it what the parcel fits or do you treat it where the building's going on the parcel, if it's split. Either way, the structure size would warrant this.
I don't think so, if it was our one. I thought it looked better.
Because I'm the one.
Pretty, pretty good size. So the planning commissioner heard this eight zero. And as they walk through ingress and egress, already on the property, because it's an existing home, they have parking because it's existing, refus and service areas, utilities are there. There was no additional screening or buffering recommended. No signs are planned and the required yard present for high-density rural residential, generally compatible with other buildings in the area. And those were the recommendations from the planning commission. So as a Board of Adjustment, we need to either agree with those or make some changes to those.
I think we covered them, and I think it was asked as well, you know, to verify this is personal use, not start business or anything, so.
It looks like he's got trees to one side. Am I right on that from the air, Oklahoma?
Let's make a motion to approve.
I have a motion to approve the conditional use application, is there a second?
Second.
I have a motion by Clemish and a second by Kettering to approve the conditional use application permit as reviewed by the planning commission. Further discussion? Roll call vote, Penny.
Dan?
Yes.
Don?
Yes.
Gary?
Yes, yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Sharon? Yes. Application passes five zero, thank you, sir, for coming in, come stay true home. We are now at item number 11, it is 7:10, and this is scheduled for 7:05. Item number 11 is an AT&amp;T Velocitil conditional use permit for the applicant, please come forward. Yeah, absolutely, sir, I will give you time to set up, how about that? So I would entertain a motion for, if I had a break, I'm in. I have a motion by Clemish, second by Kettering, to take a five-minute break, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, all opposed, nay, motion carries, we're now in a five-minute break.
Second.
I have a motion, I'm planning stuff. I have, I have a motion by Clemish, second by Healy, to go back his Board of Adjustment. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, nay. Motion.
Aye.
You're now back in Board of Adjustment. So thank you for bearing with us there, sir. And I will let you take the podium and explain your project.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Madam Chair, my name is Bill Beckham, Commissioners. I'm a lawyer from here representing AT&amp;T. We're gonna, you know, I understand that you've got probably six or seven hundred pages of material. On the high level, I'm gonna have Ryan Struff from Potter River Development and Jim Tiedemann with AT&amp;T talk about the site selection process, what's happened in the last two years with this particular location, and what they've done with the county to get to where we're at today.
Good evening, Commissioners. Ryan Struff with Potter River Development, here on behalf of Velocitel and AT&amp;T Mobility. This evening here, we request approval of conditional use permit for wireless communication facility to construct a hundred and ninety-nine-foot telecommunications tower at three ninety-eight Wildflower Road. The proposed tower would be located within a hundred by a hundred dense B area, which is approximately four hundred fifty, excuse me, four hundred twenty-five feet south of the dedicated public right-of-way of three hundred tenth street. The tower access from the dedicated public right-of-way, along with utilities, would be brought to the tower site within a twenty-foot access to utility use. Fiber would be accessed from four hundred thirty-fourth Avenue, which is to the east of the site, and would be, would be brought along the dedicated public right-of-way to the tower site. Vehicle access to the tower would be along and provided by the existing right-of-way and roadway of three hundred tenth street. The proposed monopole tower and the ground space of the site has been designed to support five users in total, of which the colocations would be between a hundred and thirty feet and a hundred and ninety-four feet on that monopole tower. Conditional use permit application was submitted to the planning and zoning staff. And following their review is deemed to be complete, based on the requirements that are outlined in Article twenty-five of the zoning ordinance, which is citing of wireless telecommunications towers and facilities. The county consultant that is utilized to review the telecommunications CUP submittals recommended that the county approve the application based on the comprehensive application and materials that were submitted to meet all county zoning and regulations within the ordinance. The conditional use permit was reviewed by the planning commission on eight eleven, nine eight, and most recently, ten thirteen. This evening, many of you have already been provided with a copy digitally and also a hard copy that we have brought in of our CUP submittals, which includes twenty-four exhibits, and includes some of the following: survey, CDs, the foundation and power design, the geotech, FAA and FCC approvals, the ground lease, RF engineering letter and study, propagation maps, the NIBA report, the visual impact study, photo simulations, and other related materials. To add some additional background to the project, the project originally began in two thousand and fourteen. An application was submitted for a tower which is north of Highway fifty. When we submitted the pre-application, the tower was originally four hundred feet in order to maximize coverage. Following our meeting with the county, county consultant, we were directed to decrease the tower to a hundred and ninety-nine feet. But this change, excuse me, this change to tower height was then made for our application. In terms of site selection, we reviewed several sites within the search ring, including the colocation to the northwestern Energy Tower. In addition, we had our RF engineer review several alternative sites following our first planning commission meeting and brought those backs, brought those back. It was determined that the current location would be the optimal location for coverage in this area. I would note that a site selection, or excuse me, that, that the site selection or site self is not easily changed once required county mandated site approvals and documents are obtained per the requirements of the zoning code. I would also just note that AT&amp;T has invested a significant amount of time and resources into the site. And with that, I'll turn it over to AT&amp;T and their team to continue the presentation.
Good afternoon. My name is Jim Tuckmore. I'm the AT&amp;T Design Engineer for this area of South Dakota, the Braskin part of Iowa. I worked on this project since two thousand and fourteen. So long it's been working to try to get a location board. We've been trying to solve this issue of coverage in this particular area and also specifically down in the Lewis and Clark areas where we've had prop calls, especially during the summertime when there's a lot of traffic into the recreational area and along Highway fifty-two. I've looked at various locations so far. Looked at locations that are in extension to the north of Highway fifty. However, and the best I could do was putting in a tower at four hundred foot, which we had attention to because I had to be that high to get over the ridge to get into the water area. Unfortunately, it was a pretty, pretty big substantial ridge there, it's all, all where it makes it difficult to getting along Highway fifty-two along Lewis and Clark area. I've looked at the city water tank out there. It was being too long, too close to Highway fifty-eight. It was really not giving very much coverage. One of our main objections are things, reasons also for covering this area. AT&amp;T has been working very hard to supply FirstNet coverage. FirstNet coverage is a service that AT&amp;T provides to EMS, fire departments, ambulances, and to the police and sort of sheriff surrounding area. We're having priority service into the area. I've tried, if I go too far east, past four thirty-five, then I can start running into our existing tower, and it doesn't cover the factors of where we're having the full service at. And the site itself, as mentioned, we went down a hundred ninety-nine foot. What makes that very significant is that on two hundred foot, you have to be lighting on the tower itself. A hundred ninety-nine foot or below will allow us to put in that tower, and it won't be there. So be as less intrusive as we can. And a monopole will also decrease the amount that the site will actually be visible. Outside of the obvious towers, a lot of people are using monopoles, so you know, like I already. But that's pretty much what I have on the site. And my rest of the coverage area and the coverage area.
Good evening, Commissioners. My name is Cheryl Riley. I'm the state president for AT&amp;T for South Dakota. Appreciate the time this evening with you. I want to dig just a little bit into what Jim was talking about. I know he alluded to FirstNet, so I just want to give you a little bit of background. I know some of you have heard a lot about it, but just how important this site is for, for FirstNet and what our objectives are. FirstNet is the first nationwide wireless communication platform designed specifically for public safety. It was mandated by Congress. The nine eleven report after the tragedy of nine eleven found that first responders were not able to help one another as they were going in and out of buildings trying to save lives because they, cell phones, the networks just got jammed up. There were too many people trying to make too many calls and texts and everything else. They couldn't talk to each other, so it was determined by Congress that they wanted to develop one network that will give priority and preemption to first responders, it's their own network. And so in two thousand and seventeen, AT&amp;T, because, and they want to build it a private company. And so AT&amp;T in two thousand and seventeen was awarded the contract to build the network throughout the country. After we were awarded the contract, then we worked with individual states. We worked with public safety officials within each state. We worked with the governor's office in each state to determine areas that they felt were especially important for coverage for public safety folks. In South Dakota, one of the areas that was determined that we needed to make sure we had good coverage was the recreation area here at Lewis and Clark. And so because we have a significant gap with AT&amp;T service there, that's, this site is an important part of that infrastructure for FirstNet. So I just wanted to dig into that just a little bit to make sure that you understood, you know, why the objective to carry, to cover that recreation area. Because South Dakota and Governor Dugard in two thousand and seventeen opted into FirstNet, they, they, every state chose whether or not they wanted to opt in. And all, all the states ended up opting in because otherwise they would have to build their own network and at extreme cost. But because Governor Dugard opted in just to FirstNet, now we have the obligation with all the sites that we were, that we determined, that the state of South Dakota determined with its public safety were important, that is now part of the state total. So we now have an obligation to the state of South Dakota to build those sites by a deadline from the FirstNet authority. So it's part of our contractual obligations with the state of South Dakota to build those sites. In addition to this site being important for for public safety, it's also going to be part of the AT&amp;T commercial network, so it'll bring connectivity to your constituents. So there's a direct benefit to your constituents, not just your public safety constituents. Connectivity is a huge, important, really commodity now. And especially now when many of us are working from home, our kids are doing school from home in some cases. So that connectivity is especially important. And also one additional benefit to this site is the fact that Midco will be bringing fiber to the site. And they asked, they agreed to let me release a statement about that. They will install over two miles of fiber optic cable to serve the proposed facility. And their statement is, once construction and installation of the tower is complete, Midco will have extended its fiber two point three miles from its current network, putting Midco in a better position to extend service to more residents in this underserved area of the county. So not only will the site bring additional wireless connectivity to your constituents, but the possibility of, because now fiber will be closer to many residents, the, the possibility of, of that type of connectivity as well. So I really appreciate your time and I would, I hope we can get this approved. So thank you so much.
What happens to you is to present. So when we get the public comment, everybody will screen us. Go ahead, sir.
Thank you, Madam Chair. As I said, the Build Back Camp, again, on the turn for AT&amp;T. I just want to talk briefly about the process of siding the towers. Most of you are aware, the federal law defines the scope of what the county can and cannot review. In some of the earlier hearings, health effects were brought up. It's very clear under the Telecommunications Act nineteen ninety-six that you cannot consider the health effects of radio frequency emissions if we meet the SEC guidelines with our equipment. And as it's filed with the county and planning commission with this application, we meet that requirement above a certain height. So health effects are not proper considerations of this commission, even if people want to bring it up. You also cannot use proxies for health effects, which might accrue property values and aesthetics if revealed issue in terms of the health effects of people, you know, around the towers. The SEC has proven, there's case studies. Plenty of sites have been drilled that show that is not a legitimate concern and this commission is hardly considered advice at law. The county itself can only deny a conditional use permit for a cell tower if it's based upon substantial evidence. The county must have specific reasons that are consistent with local regulations and supported by substantial evidence in the record to deny the permit. Ninety-six Act also prohibits denial. We're doing so with unlawfully, effectively prohibit AT&amp;T from meeting its customer service needs. Need for cellular communications in this country, as we all know, has grown. The law reflects that, and the county has to be mindful of that. Now, the gentleman behind me spoke about the service needs and the applications you're paging through there, the defense pack that was literally put together in most, almost entirely before the company was even able to come to the county to apply. Understand that Yankton has a very thorough set of ordinances that govern the siding of cell towers.
of cell towers. It requires a tremendous amount of work, effort, and resources by the company to complete the information that you have before you, before they even step into the county zoning and planning meeting room to have a discussion about where they need to go. They need to show, and the documentation's in front of you, the presentations at the prior meeting show that we are building in the least intrusive means possible. You know, Commissioner Healy brought up and was discussed by the proponents, you know, why didn't we build a 400 foot tower off the side? Commissioner Healy and I were talking about that at the zoning and planning commission meeting. I completely overlooked that your zoning and planning guidelines stated, and I'm looking at 2509 sub 2, that no tower shall be, after the effective date of this section, shall exceed the height which shall permit operation without artificial required lighting. And if we went about 200 feet, as the testimony was established at the zoning platform, we'd have to put down the white lights and the blue lights. If we stay under 200 feet, we don't have FAA considerations and we don't have the light effect. And that is what if it's solved, did in consultation with pound river in driving down the initial application of 400 feet to 200. So if we demonstrate, as we believe the documentation does, that we meet the least intrusive needs test, then the county has to show that they are not effectively providing servicing of the needs of our customers in the area and they can only do that by substantial evidence. Coming back, we have to show that there are not just alternative sites in theory, not based on anecdotal information or conversations had with adjacent landowners. The county has to show not only are those additional sites as effective in serving the connectivity needs and the service needs of our customer and the company, but that it's also technologically available site that can be utilized. That comes up a lot, but what I'm saying is that anecdotal information about a neighboring property being available, if you don't have specific technological information at the commission level that shows that is an acceptable site for our needs, as is demonstrated in the connectivity materials filed with you already, then you fail under the effective prohibition test in this federal law. There was a lot of discussion at the last meeting on 310th Street. I'm going to be honest with you folks, that's a head scratcher. I'll tell you this, since I decided to go out there last week on my way to Lincoln, Nebraska, I took a little detour. I was surprised the right time. And I included in the information, I sent the commission pictures that we took out on the spot. And there is a sign up there that says minimal maintenance road. And as my material said, you can't have a minimal maintenance road unless you're on the county highway system. But when I called the county zoning and planning board and I called the auditor's office and the state attorney's office, I kept running into the question, why is it on the county map as a priority? So what is it? I couldn't decide. Then we had somebody that's a proponent of adding the tower out there, which is going to help this other connectivity, talked to somebody at AT&amp;T. And I assumed through some connections and what that person did at the county level in 2014, they were aware that something had happened in 2014. I included in the meeting minutes that I just got asked a week ago, Thursday maybe or Friday, about a decision of the county commission then to order the groundling of the road to a certain point. Then today, lo and behold, these things just work. Somebody showed me a resolution, and I think somebody here who's the proponent who passed it under the company, it's Resolution 14611 dated November 6, 2014, resolved that that was a road that was assumed under the county map, under the county system. It's not placed on the map, which the law requires you have to do. So as I spend way too much time and way too much of my client's money examining what is this road, it's one of two things. But either way, the company has, I believe, a literal objective right to access it and to traverse it. If it's a section line highway that's been improved by people on the road and by the county on a one-time, one-off basis helping gravel on it, it's a section line highway. And the law says the public has an unfettered right to access that highway. And I've been told, and this was actually in YouTube with that, so it was interesting to watch, that back then, and as a county highway superintendent told me, that road actually sits a little bit off the center point. It's not on the center point of the section line. Where the, I guess it would be the riverside of the road, that is actually probably the edge of the section line. But the road's bend, okay? The testimony in the 2014 hearing of the commissioners wasn't spent there for 20 years. And all this is through rural roads and if the roads bend where it's bent for years, that's where the road is. So it is where it is. It's on the section line. It just kind of jobs on the section line. That's something that I should, but if it's in fact a county road, well, it's a county road. And we think that it's of significant quality and of the good enough condition that we should have access to it. And if the county has concerns about that, we already made the offer with the zoning and planning meeting, and I'll make it again here before, again, before this board from the company, that if there are, if there is damage done to that road during the construction and utilization of it, the county pays for it. There's already a statute that says nobody can do damage to a section line highway. If they are, I can assume they have to pay for the repairs. But what I'm making an affirmative offer, your ordinance is state that any offer made by an applicant in a plural manner at the hearing is part of the application. We are officially offered any damage done to the road for construction purposes. Now, your ordinance does account for possibilities or the need for emergency equipment and servicing vehicles. This tower is off that road by a considerable point. It's in the file. It's in the survey. There will be no problem getting down the road, turning around, doing whatever. There are way more houses on there than are on this, on the aerial map that I put to the application. It's a rural area. I don't think we'll be exceeding that, which is already used for by the way the road is used for. Lastly, I'm going to just, and I read this at the zoning and planning commission meeting, so forgive me those of you who heard it. This is from the county's own consultant. It would be hard to defend the denial of the CUP and not run a follow-up interpretation of the US Code. Siding of a cell tower is not like any other, just ordinary scene. You have to consider the federal rules. You hire a consultant because of the complicated nature of your ordinances. I meant you for, applauding for the work that was done to propose the place as a thorough, but the consultant has told you that if you've done what you need to do, then it should be. Now, on the phone or on Zoom is, and I know it'll be brief, is Josh Luther. There were issues brought up about the diminution of value of adjacent properties. Josh is a certified praiser of CBRE, two folds, and he's completed and attached it with what we file, valuation study. So Josh, if you're available, we have a little more about that.
Hello, my name is Josh Luther. Can you hear me okay?
Yes, sir. Go ahead.
Great. Just provide a quick summary of the report that I prepared for you. And basically, we had looked at the area around the tower. We interviewed numerous market participants to identify opinions and trends and expectations for the area, as well as studying some match, some paired sales in the areas to determine what impact, if any, the tower might have on corresponding property. In short, the surveys that we've done tell us that people really expect cell service as an amenity to a property, and so much so that most of the respondents were of the opinion that a property is more valuable with cell service compared to one that is, does not have cell service, all of the things being equal. With that, with that said, we also looked at multiple paired sales that are in, contained in the report. And those paired sales show that there, while there may be some properties in very close proximity to the tower that might experience some value loss, there, there is a significant amount of property that is contained in the service area of the tower that, that will benefit more. There is a much larger population of properties that will benefit than those that would, would experience a loss of value. Our research that we did shows that the market, the properties, is not necessarily a guarantee that they will lose value. Not every paired sale showed a value loss. So there is a possibility that not all property would lose value that are, that are in extreme, you know, proximity to the tower. So our conclusion of the study is that the area overall should have a positive benefit from the tower relative to, you know, the population of properties that these tower will be serving. And that's, that's kind of the broad, or executive summary. And if you've got any questions, I'm happy to answer.
I don't think we have any questions at this time, sir. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Does that conclude? All right, thank you. So at this time, we will take public comment. In the past, our guideline has been three minutes and we usually go for an hour. So if we approach 40 minutes and everybody's done, I will allow people to speak again. So at this time, who would like to make a public comment? I'm going to, please state your name and where you live.
My name is Anna. My mom, and I live on, at 433, 438, 310th Street. Currently, my home is the closest to the tower. I know there's other families where they're wanting homes to be built. The thing that I want to bring up is that I emailed this to all of you guys earlier this week. In their alternative sites that I didn't even realize, they're citing things in here that they're more intrusive, but the, so like some of them that I'm referring to, they were looking at a site called the Empire Works Site on Highway 52. That tower was only going to have to be 120 feet tall there to provide either service is what they claimed in their own study. And they were saying that it was just too visually intrusive to the state park. They also, in their other visual impact study results, like where our site listed trees as a way that it was okay because they couldn't see, sorry. Step back a little bit? Okay. So my problem is, is that they listed trees as a way to obstruct the view from the tower. We out there don't have any trees in this area, whatever, so ever, to obstruct the view, but they listed in some areas as ways to obstruct that view. So my thing is, is that they say that the tower would be in plain view of the state park from the Empire Works, but there's so many cottonwood trees down in the state park, I don't see how you could actually see the Empire Works from there. Same goes with, like, Mary House and Shrine. They have tons and tons of trees there and that tower was only going to have to be like 140 feet tall or something to provide service. So I, I'm questioning, is this the right site for this tower? They listed two other sites as alternative sites, Alternative Site 7, which was along Highway 434 Avenue, and then another site listed along Highway 435. And they listed these sites being too visually intrusive to the houses surrounding this tower. However, we have a house right across the street from where this tower is going in and yet it's not too visually intrusive for us. So I just, I questioned, I agree, we need a, we need a tower, we need to provide a service, but this site, I mean, they're stating in other alternative site locations that they're not appropriate for this reason, that reason. And however, our site, for some reason, it's okay to put it next to these homes. Thank you.
Thank you. Would anyone else care to make a public comment?
My name is Lisa Huber, and my husband and I live in Sundance Ridge and are the developers of Sundance Ridge Lots. Our property shares the west fence line with the AT&amp;T's proposed site for the cell tower. This cell tower is the right thing in the wrong location. It's wrong for multiple reasons. As a developer in this area, my husband and I have sold multiple lots. The lot owners have built beautiful homes, actively contributing to the tax base of Yankton County. We would like to continue to support Yankton's growth in this area. We still have lots for sale that are currently in contract but holding on closure based on the decision of this tower. The lots are within direct visual line of sight of this tower and are as close as 400 feet from this tower. AT&amp;T states that a tower will raise property value by 5% at one of the previous meetings, but if our lots don't close, my loss is 100%. This is rock solid evidence that the tower will devalue property in the area. And if you actually listened to Josh Luther, the consultant that the AT&amp;T had investigate property sales in the area, he said that there would be value loss of property in close proximity. Well, we're that close proximity. The tower, the second reason that this tower is in the wrong location is because it's not consistent with uses of the land in this town, in land in this area. AT&amp;T even acknowledged that in their application for the CUP, stating that it was not compatible with the area. The low-density residential area is beautiful and there are 360 degree views, including views of the lake. According to the county zoning ordinance, Section 1805, 5H, 1809, D9, any proposed conditional use needs to be compatible with adjacent properties. Placing a commercial property cell tower in a residential area is not in line with the use of this area. As a resident of this area, I don't feel that likely a property is the appropriate place for a communications tower. A third reason that this tower is in the wrong location is ingress and egress is not compatible with a commercial property. The road to access this area is not currently county maintained. This road, including gravel, culverts, grating, has been paid for by individuals, private individuals who live in this area. They're also the ones who plow in the road in winter and who repair damage from rains in the spring. The county has no involvement in maintaining the road and according to the five-year plan, has no plans in the future to maintain this road. Therefore, the county should not have involvement in allowing conditional use that would have commercial access to this road. In accordance with the county zoning ordinance, Section 1805, 5H, 1809, D2, and 1905, 6A, identifying appropriate ingress and egress to the proposed site is necessary. There are many issues with the 310 section line. One of the biggest issues being that in some, that it is in the wrong location. And in some areas, there are fences located in the middle of the road where the section line should be located. To do this road right would require the area to be surveyed and existing infrastructure to be relocated. This would be necessary to allow the placement of the fiber optic lines in the correct location so there would be no damage to the lines in the future if additional roadwork would be necessary. The estimated cost of this project was $400,000 per Yankton County Highway Superintendent Mike Sedlaugh. This was brought up by Commissioner Dan Clemish at the September meeting. I'm suggesting that if this conditional use permit is allowed, the county needs to build the road to their specifications and the conditional, and then bill AT&amp;T for their expenses. In addition, providing ongoing maintenance would further add to the county's cost. As brought up by Commissioner Dan Clemish at the second meeting for this request, if the county allows public use for this road due to a conditional use permit, the road should also be maintained by the county. This could either be billed to AT&amp;T or provided by the county, but under no circumstance should a private landlord have to pay for any of the upgrades, including gravel or grating for maintenance or plowing in the winter on 310 if the county allows this conditional use permit. According to the county zoning ordinance, Section 1805, the planning commission shall make a recommendation with options of granting, granting with conditions, or denying the application. The county has a right and even the obligation The county has a right and even the obligation to make this the right decision and deny this location or this cell tower based on the information provided. This cell tower is the right thing, but the wrong location. Thank you.
Thank you. Now, I allowed her to speak for her husband, too, so it was five minutes. So you spoke for five minutes, ma'am. So it's fine. Just sit down. You're good. I was just letting everyone else know. That's the reason I let you go past between that six seventeen S additional information that he was asking. Okay, so what I'm going to do, what I said in the beginning, I'm gonna let everyone else speak. And then at that time, we will let your husband speak again. So we try to be fair because we limit it to about an hour. So would anyone else care to give a public comment at this time, sir? Come up.
Oh, my, my name is John Seckware. With two-two-one Cedar Hills Road, a thousand feet from this tower site. They talked about loss of property values. I would lose interest if I was a potential buyer out there and saw that tower. My wife and I looked in Ridge twelve, thirteen years ago and settled on this ten acres. Had there been a tower there, I would look elsewhere in the county. So for me to prove that I have lost, I can definitely prove that there'd be loss of interest in that. They put a big onus on us, AT&T. We have to come up with engineering studies and things. How it impacts, that should be common sense to me that a building is in a rural residential area. It jumped past the commercial and agriculture, they're plenty of the town now. People, where are suitable sites? It's not your job to find a site, it's AT&T's job to find a proper site. They seem to accommodate a person willing to lease their property to them. It'd be a tough task. Once they found that, they locked in on this. Happy to everybody else. There's a hundred and twenty homes and properties in a half mile of this site. Right there, that kind of summed up the red flag, you know? It impacted a lot of people. It might not be a hundred and twenty people, you're a car park. Kids that walk down that road to go to school. Auto pass around, it shows it's eleven feet wide of the gravel placed, there's no drainage on that road. Snow gets plowed in, and it's truly a single track road. So that's a huge safety issue. I don't know if they're talking about building this or service. The county's overlooked this road for many years. There's a lot of homes, people homes keep getting, well, probably are out, people, folks, there to go down to the lake. So there continues to be more trapping on a road that you don't know about. For a long, long time. Maybe people don't complain about it. And I'm here to say it wouldn't impact me. And I don't take it right, just drive down the road, lawyer said, oh, that's fine to me. Well, it's been very dry and goes into great shape. All it takes is a soaking thing. It turns into a metal. Cars get left on the side of the road, trucks get stuck. It's again, scenario. So also to complete my thoughts on so this is a fifty-acre parcel that they want to put this on. What prevents us in the future if they want to add to the height of this tower, have multiple towers on fifty acres? Then worse, whoa, that's how more is that? We're gonna pay property taxes for that. And then what do we do? Give them away or auction them off? What do you do then? Expand. So then if you do allow this, which I hope you don't, you're allowing a precedent. Who will build a commercial structure, a space needle or something for a viewing platform? Because federal government likes it, and they go, we're out of lots. A homeowner and a property owner are not happy about it.
Thank you. Anyone else? Anyone in the hallway? Come on up.
Good evening, commissioners. My name is Todd Woods. I think we all understand the need and the or use better cell phone coverage in broadband in rural areas. I think everyone of the commissioners are here today, along with myself and three other commissioners, two years ago, sat out at Hurst Engineering. Listen to the FCC commissioner talk about five few wireless. The FCC commissioner talked about all five few wireless, we need more towers both together to have that strong service. We're seeing suddenly the service and data becoming more and more popular, able to prove stronger downloads, uploads. And that's not gonna slow down, it's just gonna continue to keep up. I think the word location comes up quite a bit here. You know, what is a perfect location? There's no such thing as a perfect location. Whether it's this site or another site, we can continue to move it. We just put it in one person's backyard to another backyard. I mean, I support this because I live on that area, cell phone service is poor. I'm unfortunate enough to have a broadband where I'm at, but I have friends and family that are not too far from there to be honest. I, I support this and I would like the commission to move forward with it. Based on the testimony today, the county's consultant said this is the best possible location. Right, wrong, or different, the consultant has made an accounting to say that or to prove that. So I ask you guys to support this, too, to be moving, get capital.
Thank you. Would anyone else care to make a public comment? Come on up, ma'am.
I'm Marshall, I live on Cedar Hills Road. First off, I want to guarantee that they will not try. If you approve to drive down our, our road, we have put thousands of dollars into our road to build it. We first moved here, been in there almost twenty-two years. It was rutless. Now that all the homeowners have put money in and fixed our road for its beautiful shape. I want to guarantee from the county and everybody else, if you do this, they will not come down to Cedar Hills. Even though we're attached on at the end of the three-ten. And the other question I have is, I've been trying to figure out, why isn't you have everything is listed in residential theory, but this one little spot where the tower goes, it's agriculture. I haven't quite figured out, because on your maps, you're looking at zoning, that it was all completely for homes. So then why does it say agriculture and why are they able to come into that spot of agriculture? Is what I've been told. That's how they can get in here because it's considered agriculture. And it's not. It's a home owner's area. I mean, I, I got AT&T. I saw, I understand that. But the main thing is us inside the circle that they were talking about, getting nothing up. We get nothing because you gotta be on the outside of the circle. By rock, we might give it five years, ten years, whenever they feel like doing it. They're just trying to sweep the pot for us. But I want to guarantee on all of this that it is not going to be used for their trucks and semis to come now because they will destroy three-ten. Trust me, we've had enough places, semis come down ours to see what kind of shape they leave it. And ours is a good road. Their is a crap road. Have you guys all been out there and taken a look at that road? Is it good? No, it's not. You haven't been in it when there's been rain? When the kids walk and down it, it used to be that the kids would come zooming through with their four-wheelers and with money. Forget about going through there because you're not gonna. So I want to guarantee to us that have spent all this money. But this isn't gonna happen to our road and it should not happen to three-ten unless they're willing to or you're willing to put money into fixing it up. They go over how to those that part that the family may bonds put in, culverts, they're not that high. They're a little problematic. You can't tell me you're gonna bring a semi with all this stuff. That's gonna smash those culverts. There is no way that way can happen. It's okay for cars. But you get something that can heavy in there. And everybody in our whole entire area use that road, go in and out. So it'll probably put an end to the rest of this going in now because it's gonna be destroyed. And I can't believe, I'd like you to come out and see one really good that rain and see what that will look like. You've lived here before, I can tell you.
Thank you. Other public comments?
My name is Terry, I volunteer. That was my wife that just spoke. We live just down the road, I'd say two thousand feet from the tower location. I don't have a complaint whatsoever. We have AT&T, the AT&T service at our house. We're also big campers. We've camped in all three of the state parks down there. And Lewis and Clark, we have good service. Chief Boytrain, we have good service, but Pearson Ranch, there's no service. I don't understand why putting a tower here is gonna improve Pearson Ranch, not have any effect on the other two campgrounds. That's my only comment.
Thank you. Other comments? Mr. Huber, come on forward.
My name is Todd Huber. My wife and I own a property four hundred feet west of the AT&T proposed tower site. Any conditional use permit, AT&T entered the zoning classification of proposed cell tower as agriculture. A convenient mistake. You may think that this is a simple honest mistake, but this is a huge misrepresentation. AT&T knows that Yankton County zoning ordinance, section twenty-five oh seven, specifies that agricultural property is a higher priority than residential property. AT&T knows that there are numerous agricultural properties that should have been evaluated before AT&T even started looking at residential properties. AT&T knows they shouldn't have discarded agricultural properties because of higher costs. And they shouldn't have just discarded agricultural properties that they never even gave an offer. And I have talked to landowners that have been told that this happened. I guess I believe this mistake is grounds for disapproval, or disapproval of this application. Because of this mistake, AT&T should start over and reevaluate all the agricultural zone property that they didn't get an offer to or they disregarded because it was higher cost or because AT&T never looked at it. If AT&T has a problem finding agricultural zone properties, don't hire me and I'll help them find properties. I see that AT&T has now changed in their latest package, they changed their conditional use permit to R one. I don't give a, is that just something you can do is change it from agriculture to R one, you got a major? Like if they're going to do that, they need to start over. They can't just you know, jump into this and say that, hey, we, we thought it was agriculture and now it's not, and now they're gonna leave it in that, in that system. The other point I have is that AT&T, you guys in previous meetings, you told them to look for other sites. And we told them about Scrambler Track. They keep on disregarding the best site in the whole area. There, which is the B-Y water tower. Every time the AT&T is asked about this site, they say it's not feasible because the water tank is not, is relatively short. So the WCF, which is the Weatherless Communication Facility, the amount of the structure would not have the close AT&T segment in coverage yet. Why must this WCF be mounted on the structure? Why don't they put a tower, a one-hundred-and-ninety-nine-foot tower or a four-hundred-foot tower on that location? And actually, the, this site is actually in the one-hundred-and-ninety-nine-foot ring search for AT&T. And, and another thing about this dislocation is that the water tank is about one hundred feet higher elevation than the proposed site. So a one-hundred-and-ninety-foot tower in that location would be one hundred feet taller than the proposed site. And it sounds like any additional, but like one hundred feet for a cell tower is very significant. So that would be a huge advantage. And like I said, the AT&T tower is in this, in the four input tower search ring and it's also most of the properties, even in the AT&T one-hundred-man with search ring. And that can be found, I've actually got a map that I can show you if you want to see that. Put this on the line in. And here you can see the red ring. The red ring is the one-hundred-and-ninety-nine foot, so that's the area that AT&T is saying that you have to be in to be in order to locate one-hundred-and-ninety-nine-foot tower. You can see right in the middle there, they've pointed out proposed facility. And the Scrambler Cycle Track is over on the left upper right-hand corner. You can see that. That's where touring that is located, that one-hundred-and-ninety-nine-foot area. And it's also located, the other, other ring is around the outside, the blue ring, is a four-hundred-foot tower area. So like I said, this, this site is definitely in that location. So some of the benefits, more benefits is that, is that the intersection of Highway fifty-two and Highway fifty. And so there's no problems with egress or road problems or anything like that. And AT&T actually says this is a higher location preference than the proposed site. It actually, that's told, said that in their own paperwork. Again, it's, it's located in the four-hundred-foot ring, the one-hundred-and-ninety-foot ring. It's one-hundred-foot higher elevation than the proposed site. It has twenty-six hundred feet advantage to Highway fifty-two. It has four hundred feet advantage to Highway fifty. There's over one hundred acres to choose from, choose a site from. The property is already used as commercial with a huge water tank and several motorcycle racetracks and the rest is cornfields. And there's already a steel structure the size of a battle street located on it. And the owner himself says it would be a great location for a cell tower. And another thing that AT&T doesn't really tell you, or they try not to tell you, is that if they put that two-hundred-foot tower in the proposed site, they need at least nine small cell towers that will be located right outside of Lewis and Clark Lake on that road. And I can show you the paperwork that actually shows that, if you want to see that. And it was, it was Mr. Kidmore, the R engineer, that actually had us in a letter. So one thing that would be a benefit is if they would put like into the one-hundred-and-ninety-nine-foot tower at the Scrambler Track, which would make it a hundred feet higher, that might reduce the number of small cell towers that are required. Or if they put four-hundred-foot tower up there, it would probably wouldn't be any small towers down by the Lewis and Clark Lake. So I guess that's everything that I wanted to explain. Is there any questions of what I'm saying? I think I have everything that I have. I can give you like cells or elevations and anything else that you might need to see. And like I said, my biggest issue is that, I'm not gonna say that AT&T lied on their part, but they certainly acknowledged it when they said it was agricultural. Like I said, it's all a convenient mistake. So thank you for listening.
Thank you. Final public comments? Yes, sir, come forward.
I just wanted to state, my name is Matt Evans and I used to be vice president of Scrambler Track out there. I've been out there most of my life, I've been more across. I did notice that William here, the current president of Scrambler Track, is not here tonight. I know he waited a long time at the last meeting to be here to present that he is willing to actually make something happen at Scrambler's Track. And I know already a lot of houses don't want to be by Scrambler's Track just because sometimes it is loud on Sundays and stuff. I do agree that it would be a great place. It's not in the view of any homes. It is within the circle and I, I think he had a great point of argument on that in that last talk there. I just wanted to state that.
Okay, thank you, sir. Final comments?
Jim Thorson. I live at three ninety-eight Wildflower Road to the south of the proposed site, site. Just, there's a couple things is the last two meetings we brought, brought forward was to remind that I think the people that live around where the tower live is going to be erected are just questioning why other alternative sites weren't given a better shot, I guess, at as being acceptable. And I find it interesting that AT&T with all their power and engineers can come in here and can come in here and throw any studies they want at you. And then for us to change anything, uh, it's our ownness to try to prove that that's wrong. So that would require us to hire engineers, uh, you know, uh, power builders, all those kinds of things to prove wrong. Now, it, as, as commissioned is that the way things work? Here, the people who live there have to prove that they don't want, or don't think that that's acceptable to them? Can anybody answer that question? Or is it the person who makes the application? It's their duty to prove that they have exhausted all possibilities. A second thing is that we would not even be in these meetings if you had a landowner who had built a home and was living on that property. There is no way that they would allow that tower to be placed in that, in that area. They would not even have considered a lease. At one time, they told us, because they're in our homeowners association, from what they, at one time, they told us they uh, the word was that they were going to develop that area. So I, I find it interesting that they're going to sell out, although they maybe, I don't know if those were sure what the lease is. But it's very interesting to me that they're going to sell out, which means they're going to have a high of a time trying to develop that land. I mean, you just ask the Hubers. And uh, so we have an absentee owner going to shove this down our throat. And uh, I, to me, in all these meetings, I have not seen anything that AT&amp;T has proven that any of these alternative sites um will not work. The last thing. If the campgrounds are the primary concern, number one is we're giving precedence to people who don't live here again, who come in for a couple days on a weekend, and we're worried about what theirs and, or what's intrusive to their view from a campground? And then these people have to live here 12 months out of the year and look out their front window and see it. I don't think that equates out. The, the second part of that thing is um, there are scheduled land down there that I understand was, is possibility for towers. Um, at the fishery, all those places uh along there uh are, are available for those towers now. Do you don't think that they could reach the campground better? Or as well? And so those three points, just, I do not feel like we've given proper uh due, I guess, and, and as getting an honest evaluation of alternate sites. We have an absentee landowner who there's no way they would build a home on that land and even consider it a lease, but now that they are not living there, don't want to live there, it's like, it's an extra one for them. And then the third thing is, if you want so concerned about the campers and what they view uh as intrusive, uh, think about the homeowners that live around it. And then think about the land that is adjacent to the campgrounds. Um, the federal, federal government has the law. They want that. They have land there. Build a tower on it. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Final call. So at this time, public comment for this hearing is closed. I will bring it to the commission for discussion at this time.
I'd like to say something there.
Go ahead, Commissioner Johnson.
Yeah, thank you. You know, it sure seems a parallel here. Uh, the big guy always pushing the little guy around. Uh, these AT&amp;T came in with their guns loaded here with lots of people, and they don't live here. They don't have to live next to those towers. These people that have come up there and, and said their piece that, that they don't, most of them don't want it. Find some other place to go. Uh, like I said, you people that came from AT&amp;T, you don't live out there. You weren't born and raised in this county like I was. Just like the big, big producers, the hog producers come in and push everybody around. You know, it gets real tiresome, but I even get pushed around, and so uh, welcome to the club. I'm not going to, I'm not going to vote in favor of AT&amp;T, not now or not ever. Thank you.
Are there any questions the commission has for AT&amp;T at this time after hearing some of the questions of the citizens?
I do, I'd like, maybe not specific, but to go through 2507 again. Have AT&amp;T kind of explain that process from the beginning. Partly because I get confused. We've talked about it many times. Um, that there was, my understanding, there was an original project in my 2014 timeframe. A 2014, 2012, it started by some things. Some things were reviewed, and then when this opened up again, that you already reviewed. I want to start from whenever this began to my benefit and for the commissioners that have been in fighting this. You know, and I'll, I'll agree. I, that's my biggest hangup as far as our, our job isn't to decide if we like AT&amp;T or like this project or don't like it. It's what this ordinance follows or not, and making decisions on that. So for me, that's my hangup, what I need to understand. So 2507, um, basically the priority list, how did we end up to where we're at today? Where did we start? How did we get to where we're at today?
Where, where we started, we started with live coverage for the area. In 2012, what I was given was basically the larger search area you saw. The larger search area that you saw there was not 199-foot tower height search area. It was a search area that I had given uh people for site acquisition to go and look for available locations. Further than I get away from Highway 52, which I look to provide coverage for the businesses, for the residents, and also for the vacations. So this is much more than just providing in for uh vacationers to come in. I looked at the areas going north of 52. When I looked at sites above 52, about 400-foot towers were barely meet my requirements, trying to be able to get down into the Lewis and Clark area on Highway 52 coming around the area.
Was that Highway 50?
Highway, well, yeah, above Highway 50.
Yeah, Highway 52 is the one that curves around. Okay, just didn't want people to be confused.
Absolutely. I apologize for that. And at the time, we also evaluated uh the cycle area that was mentioned several times. Once again, we would have to be closer to 400 foot to be able to try to reach the area that we're trying to get to. I use a software called Forest A-hole. It's a nationwide, our propagation goal. I don't, I don't make them look what I want them to look like because this is my area. And I take pride in being able to provide great service in that area. So I don't want to overexaggerate an area. If anything else, I would like it to be smaller so I can provide that. When I looked at the water tank area, and I looked, I'm trying to go on the water tank, or try to put a tower there. It was too far northwest, and it was closer to one of our sites, so we have existing ones to the northwestern side of the county. It's the same issue we run into when we try to get too close to the county. We run into sites that we currently have that don't do an adequate job on it. So what I'm trying to do, and I know it seems small, but I'm trying to cover a hole right there between 435 and 52, if it goes up north to Highway 50. That's the area I'm trying to cover. I'm trying to cover about 120 homes or so that they stay out there as well, as to give them good in-building and house coverage. And in 2012, we were told from landlords out there, there was a disagreement on which brother would allow us to go onto the property, and then we were told that you couldn't do that. I've been working on this area since about 1990. I worked for a company called Longlines. We weren't big enough. We were still not able to get into this area. Been trying to cover this area for a long, long time. So this, this area is personal to me because I do want to get closer to the town. And so we tried the Northwest Energy Tower. I would have been fine with going on Northwest Energy Tower and replacing the ground side. That was the next stage after that 400-foot tower to the north. We were on that track to try to get that. Um, they were late responding. And finally, we got a response saying that they did not have room, which is understandable. They're full. Their tower cannot handle any more commercial residents, our commercial companies to go on their tower. And the only option they have is for us, what we call a swap and drop it off. Take down the tower, we put up another one. We recently reached out to them again to see if they were willing to do that, and they declined, said they're not interested in doing. They do not want to take down services or facilities. So that pushed me further south. When I go further south, then I start running into recommendations by the consultant. The consultant said, if we're looking at areas around into the area that are within the red, then I would need to go down to 199. But that way, along with the ordinances you already had put in place, saying that you prefer the size to be below 199 so we can get rid of that Y issue. So that brings us up to date, and that brings us up to the area of what I'm looking for, the area. I, I would love to do a location that would make everybody happy. I've never found one in that 622 sites that I have. I'm always going to make somebody happy, and I apologize for that. I'm not here to do that. I'm here to provide service, and I'm here to give people um coverage, give them data, some speed, and just, just provide continuity in our service.
When you identify a potential location, do you simply keep your analysis to the technical side of things, or do you get into the visual aspects and some of those things that we're stating?
I don't.
Do you provide the site to somebody else?
Exactly. I'm not, the way it works for me is I'm given a site location, I'm never recording. So at that point, then I run into, I run those coordinates, and I put them in, and I put a tower on it. And how would that tower serve that area? That's why. For your point, I know I don't.
Can I ask you a couple specifics, and I know Mr. Huber's put a lot of time into this. I know, and I drafted them down, but there were a few specific sites, one of them being that the motorcycle track. The, being a preferred site. Why is that not a preferred site? And I understand the tower, the water tower itself is too small, but why? Why are we building a tower on that not?
We can build a site there. That's, that's not an issue as far as us being able to build a site there.
But being on the water tower is not going to work.
That's correct. What's taking on the water tower would be, would not cover at all Highway 52. Uh, Highway 52 by the Lewis and Clark area.
But if you put a 400-foot tower there, it would.
That changes, that changes what I look at. Yes, absolutely. If we're starting to look at 400-foot towers, then I, I have to redo what I'm looking at. As I said, at one time, we were looking at 400-foot towers on the north side, directly north of the northwest energy side, and just across from Highway 52. And, and that would barely meet what I was trying to do. But trying, trying to work in the county and trying to work with the areas that I could, I was willing to consider that. Once you start getting further west or further east, you run into other sites that we have and not covering the areas we're trying to cover.
Is the, the park or anything along 52 excluded for your search for any reason?
Around Highway 52, absolutely not.
The state park itself, though, is that excluded?
Nothing.
The fisheries or whatever, like that place?
I don't know what a fishery is. I probably got it recorded.
The fish hatchery.
Yeah, I still wonder that.
That's right, it's right at the dam.
Don, wasn't there a county? Wasn't there a county tower, um, just a little bit west of it that was tore down?
That's a couple miles to go there.
Okay, I thought it was closer to the, I would, I would, I think, or down there. Yeah, it was, I just, I just.
Now, maybe, maybe a couple miles.
I know.
So uh, the road issue. We've talked about that a little bit.
Okay, we're finished with the RM, and we can move to the rest of the light track. I can't, I can't address that.
I've finished, except for if you can tell me where the propagation map is in this book. I'd appreciate it.
I don't know. I haven't seen that. I, I can't address that. We had at one time looked at a, a whole solution with uh working on CRAN sites. CRANs are the first sort of small cell.
Along 310 and 320.
And it was much farther and much more intensive than doing along Highway 52. So that's why there's more sites. There was only three CRAN sites. And about four of them started getting into headings and angles that we had recommended. It was underfunded, and they never happened, or CRAN projects as well, so I'm not going by that. I'm going by the knowledge that I can do in this one, in this tower. This is why I'm trying, trying to get this, so we can provide a solution for this area, to help approach that area, to help emergency situations, and to help the patient.
Will you refer to the, the letter that Mr. Huber brought up, the additional small cell sites?
And one fact, we were looking at possibilities, and that's still my house down the road. That's not something that I can go by that. I wish I could, but I can't. And uh, another thing for the CRAN sites is that they will all be existent. They're all 30-foot of block. So our, so our coverage is really small. You talk about CRAN, you're talking about much smaller search on inside light holes, solid holes, and the coverage is really small.
Could, could I ask him a question? Could I ask him a question? Not right now. Go ahead, sir.
Oh, no, I was just.
I think, Don, it was going to go with the road. Don, did you have questions on the road?
Well, um, as I understood it, uh, the road was constructed by property owners out there that have a, a road development grant, I was not the grant committee group, though. I don't think it's maintained. It's not, you don't have a, okay.
The, I think the road that we're talking about, if you go on 310 to the west, and then you go on Cedar Hill Stride, I believe Cedar Hill Stride is where they maintain that road. That is not an only road. So essentially, it's about a half a mile of 310 that is a county maintained road. It is not county maintained. It, it is on, when, in 2014, when the county passed the resolution, it is technically a township-level road. But it is minimum maintenance, and by law, a minimum maintenance, we are not required to do certain things to the road. So it, it, it is owned by the county as a township-level road, but we are not required to maintain it per state law.
And Sherry, on that, if you look at that resolution, and you read what the resolution states.
that's not what the minutes reflect or what the video reflects. Because the motion that was made was for that to only extend on three ten or four tens of a mile to four two, three, four eight. And that was the motion that was made, but the resolution that was signed is totally different. It goes from three ten to Sundance Road. And I, I don't know how that came to be.
But once we put gravel on it, and I did give stop to put local transportation a call, once we took the action to put gravel on it, it became our responsibility.
If, if that's true, we need to do a better job. And I think this road should be properly maintained by the county. Maybe I got a picture of it. If it's a county road and we take over it, we might as well pay four hundred thousand dollars and build it off of it. That's, that's, we can't, we can't say it's a county road and then have it be an unsafe road.
When I originally built, uh, the house, uh, the English Ice Cream, which is nearly a half mile, uh, of what I heard. I was told that there wouldn't be no more county roads. There would be no more construction of new county roads. And, uh, you know, that's what we went by. When I built my present house, uh, there was an issue of a section line where it was. And I agent with an action that was approved by the county commission to, uh, abandon the section line. And, and the folks that are involved here abandoned the section line, then there wouldn't have been any issue. I don't think. But, uh, there may be, I mean, the county's not there, in my opinion, the county's not interested in building any of the roads. If they need a better road for this, then. Seems to be like it's a responsibility AT&T to do it. That's the way they lead all homework, to do it, put the road into their site location. And so the county's been for a long time. So what? The information you've got from the state says that, that now is a county road. And it makes it.
And it, and it does have a sign and it does say minimum maintenance. And as we have other minimum maintenance laws across the county, and that is how it has been treated. But it is a section line, so it is open to access to the landowners on that section line. Now, in the past, uh, it wasn't too long ago, a couple of years ago, um, the, when the wind came in and the towers were built and the new substation was put north of Lesterville, we had a road hall agreement. And the agreement was the road better look exactly like it looks on day one as day end. And you have stated that you have the intent to make sure the road looks like it does at the end, as it does the beginning. And we did a formal road hall agreement. It wasn't, two months ago, we signed off on the agreement after we inspected the road. So it is an option in this case with the concerns over the road. Other questions by the commissioners?
You know, when I visited with the superintendent, you know, Mike Sabatia, he, he had great concerns about, you know, this road and the truck traffic that's going to be on it and semis going down and potentially cranes and, and all of that stuff. But it's great if it's in the condition that it normally is. But what about while it's being constructed? I mean, there have been comments about it being a safety issue. And really, I think this is something the county should have done a long time ago. And if we're gonna, we are gonna claim this road and allow, you know, the tower to be on it, then we have an obligation for the safety of the citizens to just take that road, build it to county standard, to maintain it from here on out. I mean, with the, the vote made, it might be, we can't say we don't open the road and we're not going to maintain it, but allow major construction on it. And I don't think you can square those two things. And if we are going to approve this, part of that should be that the county takes over that road, builds it to proper standard, and maintains it from this point on.
I do not believe it's wise to make that a condition of a conditional use permit, that the county take over a road.
I think a mission should be put on that.
Yeah, well, I'm, I'm, I'm fine with that. Some of the issue that what I'm saying is the county, by being authorized this, is doing some obligation, you know, in my experience, to make sure that road is safe for people who are utilizing. And right now with that boat that we saw, again, eleven foot wagon, one pickup truck. You know, two vehicles are having difficult time because I don't feel that safe. And, you know, for proper investment risk. I, I can't say that it meets that statement.
Well, as I go, I wonder if additional, I have reasons for the county to take over roads that have been privately built. Uh, we take that stance.
Let me ask a couple more questions.
You have a chair.
So I want to get back to, um, twenty-five oh seven. And Mr. Tidmore, I'm, I'm sure you're like about any other engineer, you're given criteria, you do what you're told, and then it goes to the, to the next level, whoever. So I believe you're off the hook right now. Uh, but I do want to address some of these other sites, um, like the damn fireworks and the reasons given for not, uh, not working. The obtrusive view. House of Mary Shrine as well, the truce of view. Seems to be pretty much the, the goal to, and I have a couple of questions on that. Who, who distinguishes that view there more obtrusive than the view of these people? And I, I guess if it was apples to apples, I would say maybe it's flip of a coin, maybe however. But being some of these properties are priority, uh, properties on our list, being commercial. I would think priority myself. So I'm just curious how both decisions remain. And then my other kind of major question is, you know, an argument against a tower, you say it's not valid because it's visually obtrusive. Of course, you know, there has to be hard evidence that it's, you know, devalued property. But yeah, you, you utilize it not to find alternate sites. So I guess that's my, my question is, I, my biggest concern, I guess, is again, trying to go through the ordinance and making sure it's been followed accordingly, is this priority level. I've heard a lot of arguments tonight. A lot of them are, you know, valid opinions, um, and valid concerns. But I guess, uh, to me, the only, the main thing that sticks to the ordinance is the concern over the priority in, in the site even. And I guess I need to understand why we ended up where we're at.
Hey, I, I would, Madam Chair, Commissioner, I, I would offer that if you're reading the ordinance and maybe that's your interpretation of it, that you cannot move, because that's the area of the ordinance, that you can't move to a site that's, uh, under sub-six until you've exhausted all possibilities under sites one, two, three, four, five, you'll never build a cell tower again in this county. If that's the standard of your ordinance, you'll never build another cell tower.
I'll tell you that I don't agree that it's working really well.
No, it's, I was going to say it's written poorly. It's incredibly intricate. It's incredibly cumbersome. And it was sold to the county, and I'm sure by a consultant that thought they were doing a good job of protecting the citizens of this county. And I'm not arguing with the fact that they are. But it's incredibly cumbersome. And so if the interpretation of the ordinance is if you have to go through one, then two, then three, then four, before you get to five and six, you'll never have another cell tower in this site. And that just simplifies in the face of the FCC rules. Now, I didn't make the rules. I, I agree with the people in the county to some extent that are not necessarily happy that it could possibly be a tower next to it. But the FCC has very specific guidelines for counties in determining these things. Why did they not? Cell towers are essential for provisioning of cell services. And the FCC and the Ninety-Six Cell Communication Act put very strict rules on what a county has to do with designing those conditionally determined. The exhaustion of all other avenues. And I understand what you're asking, which is why didn't you exhaust location number four of, of what, which is class five versus class six, which is, um, low against any residential? Is, you know, we could have that conversation in, uh, two hundred and sixty year old circle on every possible location. And I think Mr. Heebert minimizes the amount of work he's done. I mean, as somebody that does this for a living, it's pretty impressive for somebody out there in the woods, if they don't beat the bushes or that to find people to talk to like that. But our site people look at those locations. You can look at the propagation maps. They spin those up on night cam. And they look at why this site would work or would not work. There's no point in going talking to somebody next door if you don't satisfy the nerd, aren't you? But you gotta make that happen before you even get to that next step.
I would respectfully disagree that there is at least some obligation to follow this priority rest.
I agree.
And it's, and you know, maybe, maybe it's not to bang on every door that fits one before you can bang on every door that fits two. I'm more concerned specifically with sites that were identified as, as, um, preferable sites. And then the reason given why they're not preferable is they're visually obtrusive to the park. So we moved on. So I, to me, it seems like thi- this location is bottom of the hill or top of the hill, but, uh, little man on the phone call, maybe I'll say, but so this site was visually obtrusive, this site was visually obtrusive, this site was. This one probably is, but we're kind of exhausting everything in this one. And that's what I need to understand how, why.
And, and as a lawyer from here that's been involved in this for about eight weeks, that's represented AT&T for plus years, I can tell you in consultation with the group that's here today, that the consultant that the county selected and directed AT&T to work with was involved in the final application that you've seen before you and went through the determinations like that. Now, that's our representation to you, but that had cleared the consultant's desk. And the consultant, as I read you earlier, said that they've done their work and the site should be, uh, accepted under FCC rules.
I understand that.
He might not like the process, Commissioner. I get that. I do get that. But the process is what it is.
Other questions?
I had a question for Mr. Tidmore, may I ask?
Yes.
Um, you had indicated.
As his attorney, as the attorney for the company, I'm not going to let him answer my question.
That's fine, understandable with respect, yep. So at this time, if there's no further questions, no further discussion, I would entertain a motion.
Sherry, Sherry?
Yes, go ahead, there is.
I, I'd just like to ask the people from AT&T, uh, these cell towers, how much power do they have? How many, how many miles do they go to send a signal?
Uh, that depends on the frequency and on the height of the tower. Also, it depends on the terrain.
Well. Answer me. Go ahead. Give me two miles, five miles, ten miles?
Uh, on a flat terrain, we can, on the lower frequencies like the first net, uh, we can go to a good, uh, five, six, seven miles. And then, once again, that also determines on, uh, whether you're talking about drivable coverage.
Yeah, okay.
Coverage to the side of the house. These have higher frequencies to get more data than you're talking, uh, to about two, three miles.
Okay, okay. Um, now I want to ask you this. Am I back on?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay. Have you ever explored the idea of putting your tower across the river over in Nebraska where nobody lives in some great big field where there's nobody around? If you can shoot it two, three, four, or five miles, you can certainly shoot that signal across the river over to everybody on the South Dakota side. Have you, have you explored that idea?
Um, I'll, I'll adjust that one. Um, because this is a site that's in the state portal for South Dakota. We are not allowed to move that site to Nebraska. They have their own set of sites for first net. Um, we actually looked into that and we're not allowed to do that.
And Verizon does that, do they not?
Yes, they do.
But they, they get licenses to get to operate.
But this is for first, first net, you know, Verizon doesn't have the first net contract.
Right.
Are you guys willing to, um, work with us on the, on the road, like some sort of road maintenance agreement to, to get that road to, I guess, some sort of state standards?
I, if the offer is to have AT&T, uh, sorry, Madam Chair, Commissioner. If the offer is to have AT&T, um, build the road up to the county standards, I would pick AT&T. That's so. That seems to be, um, it seems to be an excessive step. Um, I have offered here today, and would we do it in a more formal manner, offer to guarantee condition of the road as it is and repair it and damage it, absolutely. Um, I've made that representation on behalf of the company here. And we will honor that. And we'll tell you that I've, I've called with these folks and we've talked about if we are successful and move forward, what are we going to do to guarantee what we do? How do we guarantee that? It's very scarce on the road. How do we account for that? Because we don't want to get sued. So, you know, we're not done. We're gonna, we're gonna do our part to make sure that the road is as worth.
I think, uh, one unique difference here, Don, to your point about businesses moving in and we ask them to share the burden of the road. This is a little bit unique in that once the tower is built, there will be very little traffic to this site. So essentially, it's getting it built, no different than the substation. Once that substation was built, there's very little traffic other than to come check on whatever maintenance needs to be checked. So this is a short term window. So again, it goes back to if the road looks exactly like it does at the end, as it did at the beginning, then that, that in my opinion, is all we can ask of AT&T at this time.
So, uh.
Yeah, go ahead.
Uh, so we've, we've heard, uh, requests or suggestions for various things that if the tower were to be put in there that, uh, could possibly be found to place the people on that road who would worry about. Are you willing to plant trees? Are you willing to, uh, do those things?
We've talked, I, I know that there have been discussions at the planning and zoning level, but we will do, uh, work landscaping around the site, to improve that. But a few trees are literally dug up to.
Yeah, it's pretty hard to build a, uh, put a two hundred foot tree.
In this country, it's.
Yeah, that's a concern.
There are some trees along the fence line already, I believe.
Photos.
All around, no.
Just some short spruce.
Power on the road.
I think, kind of the way you're effect, though, rather not, I, I think you, you took that as, uh, making the, the tower itself disguised as a tree and.
No, that, that idea was explored with the consultant and it wouldn't, must be able to fill one of those types of rides.
So there's, I want to make sure there are.
Forty acres out there, right? Is that, how many acres? Yeah, you're fifty. Forty-eight, forty-eight. So and then forty-eight acres, uh, what, what else is going to be covered in there?
That's up to the landlord, Mr. Commissioner. I don't know.
Okay. There's your reason.
Yeah, yeah, Madam Chair, Commissioner, we're just leasing the cell tower location.
Further questions? I would entertain a motion.
You've already, you've already, uh, I've had, uh, probably more of all. I had probably more calls in favor of putting the tower up than I have proposed. And the reason is because of the four cell coverage to existing homes out there. I don't think it's just only against, there's a lot of people that may be lucky to that area to develop, other things, so. I think it's very important to follow the ordinance that we have and that's all I can say.
I, I guess I'd like to, you know, scroll over one more thing. Five nineteen, section six, AKA, you know, said before any additional uses issued for adjustment showing admitted findings if combined with specific rules governing individual conditional uses is satisfactory, precedent, provisions, arrangements have been made concerning the following, it does need that's property and proposed structures thereon with particular reference automotive and pedestrian safety. So by, I guess, who wants to say that they feel that this is safe for automotive, pedestrian traffic, if they approve this?
The, the tower itself? The ingress on the site-
I'm just following our ordinance, section nineteen oh five, six.
So this is a section line road and even if it was a dirt trail, we cannot prevent them from using it because of the right-of-way that's guaranteed in state law. And so the ingress and egress on the property itself is there. But we can't prevent them from using a section line road because that is in state law. Unless it's been vacated by the county, which this has not been vacated by the county. So as far as going into ingress and egress, they have already committed to making sure the road is maintained in good repair when they are done. Off right-of-way parking and loading areas, they have plenty of space to do their work. And once they are done constructing the tower, it will probably just be pickup trucks and things that come in and do the maintenance on the tower. Now, at times, when they have to come back and get a conditional use permit to put a second tower on that tower, we'll go through this process again, because I believe every time something is added to this tower, we have to have a conditional use permit hearing for that. If I read our ordinance, right?
We'll go through that process.
Yep. So if, if another cell phone provider wants to put something on this tower, they have to come before us and we have to OP that whole location. So refuse and service areas shouldn't be a problem. It's not a business that produces a lot of trash and things. Utilities with reference to location, they've already said there will be utilities brought in in the right-of-way. And by state law, they have the authority to use the right-of-way because it's a utility. There is a public right-of-way. Screening and buffering, I believe in the application, they're going to put a fence around this with it. Am I correct on that? And it was supposed to try to blend in with the surroundings. So screening and buffering there, there will be, probably be a sign out front that has some information. I believe that was required in the, the wind tower section. I would assume with a phone number, things like that. It was, it was in the application. Required, required yards and other open spaces. I, I don't see that being a challenge here because there, did I read it right? There are four hundred feet off of the property line for a two hundred foot tower. And general compatibility with adjacent properties and other property in the district. And that the granting of the conditional use will not adversely affect the public interest. And it is a conditional use allowance in the residential zoning of our ordinance.
Chair, may I ask one more question?
Sure.
Mr. Tidmore? I think you're the expert on it. Close mounted antennas, how many locations would you think of on the five location? Hold that thing, how will-
We would take up one.
One additional.
We would take up one, one red.
If you had close mounted antennas?
We had close mounted antennas, in other words, what we consider self-montol, we would take up two. Because I, I think close mounted, we would do one antenna, both ways.
Sure, so you stack them as well.
We stack them and then we can get all the technology. And any carrier would do the same, you know, the frequencies and be able to maximize the spectrum in the area.
You may or may not want to answer this. What are the odds of somebody else coming in on this tower? In your experience?
From my experience, for somebody else to come in at a hundred and approximately seventy to a hundred and eighty is pretty, pretty high. To be honest, I mean, I, I've worked with tower companies that our focus was to build towers and to get into an area like this. But the challenges, it is good to have existing towers. Because as you said, you still have to bring it before you to get it approved, it's hard to be on it. If the tower is there, I would love to go on into this tower. And it's not, as I said before, I would, I would much prefer that than to, to go. So in my personal opinion, it would, it's very feasible that you're gonna get a reasonable.
Thank you.
Other questions? I would entertain a motion.
Now, before I have a motion, I'd just like to say, everybody's in favor of your better cell service. Nobody's against that, nobody's against AT&amp;T, you know, you're walking in our community now, but I feel we have an obligation to put these facilities where where they're in the best location. That's the whole reason behind something.
Ninety-nine percent of time, I'm in agreement with that. My concern is federal, federal, we, we have so much room to look.
Are there anything that you have, kind of, what's been stated that I?
No, I mean, it isn't for me to, you know, make the recommendation or want me to recognize.
But I'm not asking that, I'm saying that, is there anything that's been said, applies with, with your beliefs of what's true?
I, I think you have to look at what your consultants say. And that's what I'm behind.
Again, I would entertain a motion.
I'll move through the application for the tower.
And before anybody says that, I do believe we need to add in there, even though they've said they are committed to do it, to some type of road hall agreement.
Exactly, road hall agreement, landscaping trees. I think that seems to be all.
So personally, I would like like to see, I know it's gonna take up space, but I'd like to see the most common and I'd like to see the painted pole.
I think the ten thousand dollars of the, of the I don't know how it feels on the close mount. And what, what it does, if you look at it.
I've got a picture of that, this is the one that they're proposing, right? I don't know, I doubt.
That would be additional area. It'll, it'll just be one at the top. You post on it, print it again, to get a good.
Yep, and that was part of our consultant's recommendation.
He did mention that.
It was in his report. And did you want to ask AT&amp;T how open they are to that?
Believe it, believe that was discussed. Well, that's what we have to weigh in the pros and cons. So, do you want to weigh in on that?
What was the question?
Well, we need, we need to take it upon ourselves to weigh in pros and cons of utilizing additional antenna space, but I don't remember, we, we kind of talked about the close mountain. I don't remember that that was enter penalty of public.
A hundred, a hundred ninety-nine foot more of all we call self-pole, close mountain antennas, when you issue for AT&amp;T. Is that possible? Or somewhere else? You'd, you'd be able to safely get two, possibly three tenants, but sure, it's not gonna be a five tenant tower.
If you did a regular one, it'll be five.
You'd be able to get five tenants on it. Not saying you would get five tenants, but.
What's, what, in a location like this, what would you say is the likelihood that you'd get five on a three standard screen? Do you think it would happen, Commissioner?
I don't normally deal with five carriers. We deal with, in an area I go to, every-
It would also be as involved to be wireless providers. It's just a benefit of the house. And that's be, it'd be a massive. That would be considered.
Dan, did you want to look at these two pictures too?
I, I saw it. I would like to see at least something, we're gonna prove this something done for the citizens who live on that road or some, some promise from the county that we're gonna maintain that road for them. Something that should have been done a long time ago, if you ask me, but we, we did it before all of our time here and it's if the county has said that we're gonna maintain, we should start maintaining it at least to some sort of standard. A lot of the citizens out there put their own time and money and resources into it. And if it's a, I don't know if the county, we're considering it, one, we need to take some level of ownership of that.
It is, it is a, unless it has been a location for a right here.
Yes.
And I, I don't know when the last time we've done maintenance of any kind. So
I think Mike, I think I recall Mike saying, we've probably never gone down there. But I can't promise that.
Well, he said, he said they agreed it a couple of times.
I know, you know, if they, you know, you guys have a little community, I depending on what we do here, I think that we all have to have an obligation to people who live on that road. The one lady who was here also asked that we put in there, if you guys are gonna prove it, that there's no trucks on Cedar Hills Road. That to be some condition, with some.
I would see, I agree.
It sounds as a private, there's no reason why it would be going on again.
I would see a road hall use agreement in that. It would say that AT&amp;T personnel will use-
Cedar Hills Road.
Madam Chair, a question for- From the couples in here.
Oh, go ahead, yes, go ahead.
I, I know you would rather not see anything. You did mention that trees would potentially help. And I'm gonna put you guys on the spot because your, the poll system is, is rather. Can I ask more what you got in mind? And then also I'm curious, if this pole were to be painted, they'd paint them billions of different colors. Do you have any, would anything be preferable over the elements?
Um, no. I guess, this is a hard one, is I have a feeling that the paint will eventually heal, wait, it's, I don't know, like I, but the fact that I'm gonna have to look out like a whole lot of the whole time, I would ask, thank you, the trees. Because we, at the last meeting, we were talking about how beautiful our whole road trees. So I was thinking more like, would you, like, when people build their privacy tree lines for homes?
You're thinking outwards of property?
Outwards of property lines, as tall as we can get the trees.
That's what I was thinking.
Two rows of them, that kind of thing. But anything to visually lessen this burden on our land. Because I do think, I mean, I don't know that we're gonna actually stay there. I mean, this is my dream home, and I know this is very optional for me. But I don't know that I want to stay there and look at it. So I need to be able to stop this, how this would happen. And so anything that can visually deter the tower's view from our home.
Do they, I have a hundred foot by a hundred foot for the fence?
Like, does the fence have to be a hundred foot by a hundred foot? Because that seems like a huge area at the bottom, too. Most of the towers that I've driven by don't have a hundred foot by a hundred foot base under them.
Like that defensive equipment outside.
And so it's just kind of, like, it feels like a very visual burden. And I feel like we're now seeking for it, like.
Yeah, I didn't mean put you on the spot, but I, I just wanted to make sure, mostly with the trees, since you made that.
Kind of all the way around.
I assumed that they would be out per perimeter, but I wanted to make sure what you-
Kind of all the way around the perimeter.
Gone to ask the question too. Could it not be both, like some closure to it? Sand the perimeter, you know, so, because if you get the perimeter, they're actually out built. The tower is, so we're gonna see trees, we're still gonna see the whole thing. Right.
And I was thinking, all the way around the four foot, five foot area, kind of making it a little.
She meant the perimeter and the fence.
Yeah.
Not actually right up by the road.
No, I mean, the, like, out four hundred feet, trying to, like, visually impact it, like, kind of around the whole thing. Because there's two lots that are gonna be four hundred feet from this hole. When they look out the window, they're gonna be looking directly into that. And so I thought maybe for them to, tree line coverage would deter. Like, it's hard to visualize without actually having a location like that. But you want to see that, how many towers are there in that house when I drive anywhere? Because I'm thinking that if I have to look at it further more, so.
I think a chain link fence would be better than a painted one, because the painted ones you're really gonna see. For a chain link fence, you can actually look through it.
But I also don't know what, you know, you know, you mean like-
I mean, I still want the, the tree, because you're not gonna cover every inch of it, I don't know. Well, we're not gonna resolve the tree, you know, here, right? Right, I just wanted to get an idea of what our agreement is.
Can you answer, Wespin? Can, can you do that also on the west end? Because we have multiple properties that share the fence line. We're closer than they are.
That's what I was saying, kind of all the way around the whole thing.
Absolutely.
Right, I, I don't know what the solution is, but yes, the intention would be to try to offer some trees for the whole protection. I mean, I can't ask, do we, do we plant trees around the whole fifty acres?
How about we put a region on a two?
We gotta remember that they say that the only lease that land with, we have to have the wider circle of agreement, I think, before we plant, before we get private trees. And they should have some kind of thing, you know, if you plant a tree, a year later, it might be dead. Then who, then who's gonna redo it? You just let it die and then you get a hook in it.
And I appreciate Mr. Kettering's comment that you need to have some circle of agreement, because I still don't see how this fits with the conditional use of the area.
I, I think we need to have it, I, if we're gonna, if it's gonna get approved tonight, I think we need to have that figured out, or at least a condition that, you know, we, we approve a tree plan or something, we, we can't, we can't just approve it and then try to add things later, that's not how it works, I mean, we gotta have it in, we gotta have it in now, or, or make it a condition that we will have it at a later date, something like that.
Will this tower ever go higher than what it would have to become for another condition of use? I'm gonna kind of speak for AT&amp;T, but structurally, it, it just seemed funny that they're replacing it four hundred feet back, then by law, I think they don't have to notify the, the, us people that they want to go higher, they do. It has to go through the conditional use process again, to go any higher. And again, I think structurally, typically on, power increase, it also expands upon, it's kind of a what-in-situation. But anyway, it would have to come back in some other, or another conditional use to expand.
You realize that you're arguing about, this is not something for this particular use of this area. You want conditional use, and now you're arguing about how you can make it so we don't see it there? That's what you're arguing about? Yeah, and I, I know, Haley, you got a good point there, you're under the gun for, for the federal laws. It comes down to, if you have other options, that's what I argue for, if you have other options. And, and Mr. Tinmore said he'd be more than happy to put it down there by the, by the campground. Uh, I, I can't see, you aren't denying the conditional use, you are just telling them, find another site.
I guess probably with, with, with that motion, it was in my mind, you just move it, it didn't say in the graffiti area. There's gonna be a place for people that are kind of on it there. So, our, well, they said this is the best place.
My, my concern, I mean, I still have concern that the twenty-five oh seven isn't completely satisfied, but. I don't know that, that they have to be, I think federal law is gonna trump us on that anyway. And I think it's like, uh, to the border than that, you don't have a, I'm gonna say in it, other than. Things we're discussing, road hall agreements, possibly stealth mount. Those things are things. Unfortunately.
What's the opinion that you, if it's approved, would you prefer a stealth mount that's closer, or would you? Yes, we're asking the opinion, the stealth mount, with a whole less antennas, but it's closer to the pole rather than one that stands out.
Um, probably that, but can I also worry you, maybe if we put another tolerating to this tower?
Not without a conditional use.
But any once they have, like, I feel like once you have a conditional use of this, you agree, then next time it comes up, it's like, one guy, and then one there, so I put another.
Oh, I'm a little, it's, it's a risk.
Yeah, that's what I'm worried about, is that it's gonna be on a tower location site.
Well, and what, it was said, with, without the stealth mount, they can put fire on with the stealth mount. So, you zone two, but. So, if it's a stealth mount, it probably looks better, but you can put less on.
Yeah, we have a motion on floor, I don't think we've had a second. We have it.
Do we, do we have everything on there? Because you said you wanted a road hall agreement, and then we were gonna have a route where they can go on Cedar Hills Road, right?
That would be part of the road hall agreement.
And then we were gonna talk about trees, but let it be.
And, and again, you go back to the trees, they're renting a, a specific site, so for them to commit to planting trees, the, the landowner has to be in on that as well, and so that's a difficult one to come down, I think, here.
I think it has to be put down, if we're gonna do it, it has to be put down.
And I'm not discounting that it would, would be good things, but.
I think, I think the landowner has to suffer some with this, too.
Absolutely.
So, you know, at some point, we need to make some type of decision, we can sit here all night and, and talk this over and over. Um, and we've certainly identified the road hall and, and not using Cedar Hill Drives as a priority to add to the motion.
Can we add in that, I mean, if, if, if this does go through, if you approve this, Sundance Ridge is not available to them either. That's been privately paid for one hundred percent.
So, we could do this.
So, the road hall agreement would need to use the right way allowed by law, and that is three ten. It would be there in, it would be there out.
So, you guys said that that road is only relevant to our driveway, they're trying to access past our driveway. Just saying now, like, where their location is, we bring gravel in that ourselves, but can we go to take the gravel back off? Because that's not, how many, like, how many haven't been, they didn't go through the ground past our driveway? They're not maintaining it.
You put the gravel out?
We, yes, and culvert.
Two culverts.
I mean, you can put it back to North third row for each break.
I mean, I came here, I asked about burying culvert, and they told me they don't want nothing to do with the road. All I said, well, you have to take a payloader, just take a little bit out, you guys have a payloader. I bought the culvert right there, just set it in, and create your son, just use it there, I'd be nice enough to ask them about it. I went in all myself.
The answer to your question is, yeah, if, if that resolution is to your place and not past you on that gravel, state law still allows them to utilize that as a right, like, whether it's a dirt path, but.
Yes, they, they use it as shared path, but we have the right, totally have the right to use it for culvert. And what we promote like trailer, anyway.
But legally, I could, I could give her answer on this, but.
Well. What legally, what's your legal position on that?
I, I would have to look at, at what was placed and wasn't placed, and, I mean, the right of way goes the entire length. Three ten is my.
You didn't say, if I use it, we're just saying, we want our stuff on that.
And that would be a, that would be a still question, I think. I can't answer it, right?
Well, I guess my thought is, is section line, Gary, tell me here, if the section line is moved over to where the current road is, at the point that we stop battling, that's no longer the common road. So, that needs to be like getting your gravel here, your culvert. They can come in farther east and make a route up to the alleyway, I think, of the three ten.
As long as they get permission from the property owner that owns forty acres. They have to just make their gravel water.
There you go. So, they have to come in on the, on the east end of that site to access their spot, man.
I, I just said, up on Cedar Hills Road, I want to guarantee that they will not supposed to go on our road, which is fine, but three or four times, we've had them come on, you know, anybody that's come on the road with the heavy trucks, that we give to, they have to repair any damage, but they're not supposed to be, I need a guarantee that they're gonna do something. If someone in the semis comes to do them, they don't give a rip which way they come.
And that will be part of the road hall agreement, is they have a hall route, essentially, they go in on three ten, they go out on.
We have to come in through weird, I mean, they've tore up our roads many times, so. But we couldn't do anything about it.
The, the site's actually Wildflower Road. Why are they coming in on three ten rather than Wildflower Road?
Because when they, my, my interpretation of that is when they made that lot, that's where they assigned the address, was on the south side. It does not mean they can't access the property from the north. So, when they set it up in Beacon, and they give little green addresses, that's where they put it. Now, in the future, if they split the lot, they'll put a different address on the second lot, but that's how it is right now.
Where the standards they do go rolling?
So, other.
They're not supposed to be on?
Other questions by the commission, we have a motion on the table at this point, and we have not seconded because we're not sure if we need to change the motion or not.
I'd love to see, you know. I think we should send a highway superintendent out there and put some gravel on that road, at least, you know, right away. And have him assess that, and make repairs, if he sees fit, on three ten.
Part of a road hall and use agreement is that it's inspected, and they put that in.
Well, but, but it gets in extremely poor repair right now, or in some ways. We should, we should have it in decent shape for AT&amp;T to use it, and then when they get it back to us, it's in decent shape, as opposed to us giving it to them in extremely poor shape, and we get it back to them.
So, I, I did drive this road, I don't know how many other commissioners drove this road, but it's better than the roads that are out by my property at this point, and those roads aren't, I mean, that's, so. So.
Yeah, exactly.
The county isn't being done.
And it is, and part of the road hall agreement is to make sure your road looks exactly like it does when they're all done constructing the tower, if it passes tonight. That is the goal.
I know they've offered a ten thousand, they were.
Maybe we should give that ten thousand to the, my foundation for all the work that they did on it.
Wouldn't, that sets a precedent across the county for every farmer that is out there grading their road today. And there's a lot of need for AT&amp;T, so we need to be careful with that. And that is between AT&amp;T and the homeowners.
That town that was homeowners' road.
So, and I, I think what we'll probably end up doing is, is either Don will revoke his motion right now, so we can make a clean motion, because I'm not exactly sure how much was in Don's motion. But we certainly need a road hall agreement and use, which will outline the hall in, the hall out, and the condition of the road when it starts and stops. And we can certainly use the one that we had with the electric company for the substation. It worked well for that project, in fact, the road looked better at the end.
They built that road. Station was, they, they actually constructed, you remember that down, because that's up, my last given, they had to go down. That's a case where they were gonna use it in that, those guys actually built the road at the property.
They upgraded it, yeah.
Well, but it was, it was a town that, and they built that road, and I'm just kind of wondering, maybe that would be appropriate in this situation, too. Since the road isn't that short, since we've done that before.
We didn't require them to do that, they had to do that because their equipment was so heavy in that area, and it was wet. So, we didn't require them to do that.
Well, one of the things that, going forward on this, that I think about, too, is that, and this is a very difficult, but nail down, light down, even the night sign, but I think it should be AT&amp;T's responsible, being going forward to put all the people on that road to maintain that road. Is it, is it, is it a county? No weight in this, other than maintenance road, and I don't see the county reading the gravel and property.
We're gonna have to, no.
No, we don't. There's a minimum basis, the basis of road, we have typical road haul provision and use agreement, it's gonna have two parts, one's gonna be construction of the project. The other's gonna be the maintenance, the use, and maintenance. So, what need this, in that agreement, we identify the parameters of the construction of the project. And after that, it's gonna be limiting, part of that will limit them to three ten only for access. And the other part would be for future use and maintenance, so you also have to access three ten. And I would see something in that maintenance agreement, any equipment that needs to be brought in. There's some check there, or as opposed to maintenance of the room, but typical pickup truck, once a quarter to come up. Come monitor something, it's not gonna be that.
But we may look to the winter time and, and it's the relative snow shift, it's gonna open in the next one.
And we have additional trees, uh, unlimited trees and.
Well, we have asked, but we can just, tell us whether they're gonna be trees.
I think that's up to us to grant it with conditions or not.
Yeah, I think that. They're willing to do it, then that's the first step forward, and make an agreement on what's gonna be done, if they're saying, no, no trees, we won't be involved in any landscape or things like that, then we know that, any property.
One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, the west, northwest. At least nine or ten, or, you know, and a lot of these are being subdivided, yeah.
They don't know the length.
I made a suggestion. To get a reloader and close toxicity trees to climb on the home, moving, ten trees to provide. We can place them over. We all do it through the.
I do prefer that, number of trees, that discussing who's in proximity. All you gotta do is decide its size, and type. Well, who's in proximity to get the trees done? AT&amp;T.
AT&amp;T.
In your experience, have you ever been asked to do this?
So, I, is the proposal that we pay for ten unidentified trees for every adjacent landowner? And who is in other tree, what types of trees, the cost of those trees, I, I've paid a lot to tree, I assume, too, I, it doesn't seem to be. You've agreed, I believe, earlier in this file, to do mitigation on site, now, how do you delay that? I don't know at this level, because it's a whole issue, it should be addressed. I don't know if your ordinance allows it, much less practically, how you order a company to pay for ten trees to be trying to build, and they create by. Much less. So I'm not familiar with anything like that.
So what mitigation steps were discussed at planning?
I don't remember.
Anything? Because I, I saw on the app there was a fence.
It's usually, it's usually trees to block the fence.
Okay.
Sure.
Well, with, with AT&amp;T, they will plant trees around.
I don't believe, sorry, Madam General Commissioner, I don't believe we have the authority to do that under our land.
We hear a talk about just the base of this.
Yes, yes.
About, you know, within your.
Yes. I believe that ordinarily the mitigation goes to the, the fencing that's around the guide wire. How, Tim Martin, is that correct? They're nodding at me that that's correct. That's what the, the idea of a hundred by a hundred by hundred tree belt. We certainly don't have the ability to do that under our. That's correct. We usually don't put in trees as far as the negotiations. But we can work on the fence. The fence goes around the buildings. There aren't no guide wires, monopoles, so maybe we don't have to extend out further than that. But that's what we decided on the fencing and we have, we have to label the side itself. That's FCC mandated. Every carrier that's on there has to put a contacts. All the signage on there. So you use mitigation for around the area. It looks nice, gravel and things like that around the compound itself and the fence.
That's super subjective.
Thank you. Further discussion.
It may not go along with, but I think that.
Anything we can do.
That's now I've heard of.
One of the middle school, Dr. Bogdan.
That's a much more appropriate location, I think.
So we have talked about a road hall agreement where a three ten is the access in and out. Before and after, it needs to look the same.
Or better.
Better would be nice.
I love that.
And that was offered. During the discussion.
I don't know how to do that. The pulver is crushed.
Sir.
Commissioner, Madam Chair, that offer was to, what was believed to be a road district. There's a road district out there. We press a color to repair the bone. $10,000 was offered to that district to help with the road. We'll fix it. Put that on record, sign a road agreement. If somebody doesn't believe we're honoring that agreement, they can bring it to this commission. This commission can reach out to AT&amp;T and AT&amp;T will.
So at, at this time, Don, you have made a motion. Would you like to restate your motion?
I retract it.
You're retracting your motion. Would someone else care to make a motion? And it certainly needs to include the need for a road hall agreement.
So we're down to the road hall agreement and we're also talking about trees around the base structure. Right?
Well, I think that is an apple tree. Fairly pending, but. I think this is the time to clarify these uncut trees. The landscape, but I think it says.
And the only purpose trees that the base is going to serve is to hide the fence. Because the tower is 200 foot tall. And I don't think there's gonna be too many trees at that location that grow 200 foot. So, I mean, you, you have to look at the argument that's being made. And they, they are renting a site and is your rental property 100 by 100?
400.
It's 400 foot off the drive. And if you're putting a fence line on your perimeter, come step to the podium, come on. If you're putting a fence line on the perimeter, what you are renting, you don't control trees on the outside.
General Commissioners, the lease area that we have with the Landowners right now is 100 by 100 around the tower. It also includes an easement to the, which goes from that 100 by 100 area to the north to a right away of three ten. So if you're adding the condition I know was discussing in the, in the supplemental, like you're clarifying, you know, trees around or asking. We can't go outside of the 100 by 100, which they've had to move the fence in a little bit so they can put some trees. So make sure that all carriers could fit at the base. And then clarifying, you know, one certain type of fencing, a chain link with slats. Right now, I believe it's proposed as a wooden fence. If you want. The word is beating me right now, but. Different type of fencing material, clarifying that.
Okay, so a wooden fence is meant to blend in with trees, the surroundings, the brown grass, green grass and all of that. So in my opinion, putting, trying to get them to move that fence in and putting trees around isn't really taking away from the tower that's there. So I think we're losing some focus in, in that argument. And I don't think a chain like fence would make it any better than a wood fence that is either grade naturally or stained. I think those, first, personally, I would rather have that type of fence because it kind of fits with the surroundings. So at this point, again, I go back to.
To approve of the ball conditions, the road hall agreement and road use agreement, including but not limited to ingress and egress from three ten only to the site, cost of Yankton County to inspect the condition of the road prior to and after construction shall be included as well as one inch of gravel to be applied from four thirty four to the entrance and grading to the long. Yes.
Let's go to, let's start two inches.
The whole, so we take the wind, though, go gloss or some sort of.
I disagree with you. The way would be better. Y'all and I would go in there.
Y'all and I would get better.
Hey, Sherry. Sherry, can I ask a question?
Yes.
Uh, what, what kind of provisions are in this agreement? I understand this land is rented from some individual and. I, I, I take it that, you know, they get paid some kind of rent for overlook. But what, what happens in 10, 20, 30 years when this tower becomes obsolete or, you know, some new technology comes along and, and it's, it's an abandon or the, say, Antico, TNT goes out of business. Who's, who's gonna remove this tower and who's gonna remove the foundation? And who's gonna put it back to its natural state? And who's gonna pay for that?
Bonded, Gary.
It's in the ordinance.
I don't know if you heard, Gary, they're, it's bonded.
It will, bonded, you. And that is what I, that, that's not an answer. I wanna, I wanna, I want, I wanna know who's gonna, how it's gonna be taken care of just because it's bonded. Bonded for how, how much is it bonded for?
If you want to read the ordinance, section 2525, it's removal of wireless telecommunications facilities and it outlines the procedure for that. So it's in our ordinance?
Well, 20, 20, 30 years down the road, it might cost 10 times what it's gonna cost today.
So you have a motion on the table. Joe, did you want to clarify it again? Or you've got the road hall agreement, the in and out, inspect before and after, and you have the one inch of gravel and grading and is that by the county?
By the county, that's how we rate.
By the county.
I mean, yeah, did you say maybe county would be up there? I think, would you be willing to go two inches of that?
I, I, I think when he puts gravel on, he tries to put at least two inches.
That's, that's what I was, if one inch is gonna be too hard to scan, so.
So I have a motion on the table.
You restate, sorry, I just restate the motion.
Motion to approve with condition of a acceptable road hall agreement, including but not limited to ingress and egress from three ten only. Cost of Yankton County to inspect the condition of the road prior to and after construction. Two inches of gravel to be placed from four thirty four to the entrance of the facility with applicable grading. Replacement. Work will be done by Yankton County. That county.
Could we add in there, you know, you had the road hall, but we added something. Something that was loaded something.
We'll have to have three ten all.
That's the ingress, ingress. So I have a motion on the table. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion by Gillian, a second by Ederin. To approve the conditional use permit based on a road hall agreement. Further discussion. Road hall though. Joe?
Yes.
Don?
Yes.
Gary?
Can, can you hear me?
Gary?
No. No.
Joe? Dan?
Yes.
Sherry? Yes. Conditional use permit has been approved 4-1. Thank you, everyone, for staying so late for that. At this time, I entertain a motion to go back into regular session.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to go back into regular session. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, nay. Motion carries. We are at item number 12. And we have a lot of folks in the hallway who waited a very long time to get public comment on this, so time being 9:45. Gary, would you want to come forward? This is, this is Reikland RV Park for Matt Evans. You want to take, and, and it's gotta be no more than five minutes in and out because these folks have waited a very long time. So a motion for a five minute break. I have a motion, a second for a five minute break. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, all opposed, nay. Motion carries, we're in break.
...
I would like to continue the idea that was started in the late nineties to build a very well-maintained lake with beautiful trees, landscaping, and a great outdoor feeling. This will be a very clean development with strict rules, um, and guidelines uh, to keep the lake a beautiful place. The lake area will be a very spacious. The lake area will be very spacious between the twelve lake homes on the northwest side of the lake and a combination of twenty lake homes with eighty campsites on the south side of it. The water, electric, septic systems have all been approved and engineered by the utility companies and contractors. Um, that's all integrated packets as far as approval through NRCS, uh, DNR, um, BY Water, uh, BY Electric. Um, it also shows a letter from, uh, Mike uh, Solatchek, uh, as the installation of the existing approach that, um, was not, uh, up to par, so it was redone uh, with a twenty-four-inch culvert, which is above specs for, uh, that position. I will take care of the roads. I will build the roads. I will maintain the roads. Uh, I will maintain entrances, everything to take care, taking care of in that aspect. Roads will be thirty-five feet wide, um, which is more than enough for two-lane roads. Some people later on, uh, might bring up covenants, uh, as far as this, uh, property goes. Um, I was told by the state attorney that the covenant cannot influence any decision, um, made by, uh, the commissioners. A current, another argument is that these covenants are, um, not valid. These covenants were made, uh, without all of the owner's, um, permissions. Uh, Chad Taylor is the one who sold me the property and who was co-owner of these, of this property in the nineties, and, uh, he, uh, went to court on a court case, um, because the previous owner, John Wayne, tried, uh, taking the property uh, from him. He got the court case, got the property, and then sold it to me. Uh, currently, this is zone R two. R two, um, allows campgrounds, um, as far as zoning goes with a conditional use permit. I felt that a PUD was more fitting, uh, with how this is being built. Uh, these lake area homes will, uh, not be sold off in lots, but these will be, uh, on yearly leases, long-term leases, as vacation homes. Um, that has turned out to be a pretty big thing in Gately. Um, there is, uh, Kurt Oliver's, uh, vacation homes that he has on, uh, it would be four thirty-fifth and Highway fifty-two. Um, he's built eighty of them on eight acres, and that has been a pretty good establishment down there. I was also, uh, I talked to Jessica, um, and Gary, and they felt the same, uh, as this was a better idea, a better fit as a planned unit development instead of going with the conditional use permit, uh, through the R two zone.
There are no questions at, at this point. I think what we'll do is we're gonna take the public comment.
Perfect.
And-
Uh, will I be able to answer any questions and reply after, after their questions or, or comments are-
After public comment is closed, we will allow you to respond.
Perfect, thank you.
All right. So at this time, we will start an hour of public comment, and I think I talked to some of you in the hall in the first break. So we'll do three minutes of time, and at the, at the end, if anybody wants to say something again, we'll allow you to come back up, so. Time being nine fifty-five. Who would like to go first? Come on up, ma'am. Oh, go ahead, it doesn't really matter.
Nope. Whatever. Thank you. Please state your name clearly so thought of and recorded. Yeah, I'm Carrie Philmeyer. Um, I live two miles from Mr. Evans' property. It's a land that I drive daily, and I'm going to be, uh, not like my neighborhood on my viewpoint for this. Um, I drive that road like Moke Young Farmers. I work full-time. My husband works full-time. To make ends meet, we also recently invested three hundred and eighty-five thousand dollars into a property a mile from Mr. Evans' land. Denying or discouraging young entrepreneurship is shameful in the county, and I hope you guys look at that tonight. Um, for sharing, the folk sharing land of Mr. Evans have lived there longer than I've owned my property. I purchased from my family. We've all had an equal opportunity to buy this land, and don't discourage a young entrepreneur for taking a business plan created decades ago and moving forward with it. It sends the wrong message to those in this county purchasing and investing in the future of Gately. Thank you.
Thank you. Ma'am.
I'm Bob Chop. I am currently speaking as a representative of Udyte Township. Don't get me wrong, Udyte Township is not against speaking out of the oven. Yeah, we do have some real concerns about this particular project. On the north side of Lake Alexis, it is bordered by Udyte Township Road, gravel road, it's the car dealership. There is a limited amount of riprap along that road there, and the road rap is only field, so. It is not the traditional quartzite that is usually used. Udyte Township does not have the funding available in order to be able to afford to riprap that area, to curtail any erosion problems that are gonna come from Mr. Evans raising the level of the lake and having it at a high level so that his unity can enjoy the lake to the level that he wants it to. Uh, there will be-
Bob, are you talking through Old Fifth Street?
Yes, that's what I stated today.
Yeah.
Okay. And, uh-
Sorry.
It's getting late.
So you're talking about raising the level, isn't that?
Yes, the water level.
Yeah.
And, uh, Lake Alexis is a holding basin for water, and under normal rainfall, um, the, the lake's gonna rise in and fall. Um, but if it's gonna always be full, there's gonna be overflow. And that overflow goes through, uh, armland to the east and makes its way across the section across the mile to four hundred and thirty-sixth Avenue and flows north along the west ditch of four hundred and thirty-sixth, up to three hundred fifth, and then crosses four hundred and thirty-sixth and continues east for half a mile. And, uh, yeah, the concern of the township is, you know, because Lake Alexis will always be full. There will be, you know, more flooding, and those ditches will have water flowing through them and compromising the road base and, uh, making the, the roads, you know, subject to, um, deterioration, um, from continued saturation. Um, and Udyte Township just does not have the funding available to pay for that, uh, to continue the, the maintenance and upkeep for the infrastructure. Um, we have been on a permanent out, out, opt-out for at least twenty years. Uh, in the last ten years, we have had two additional opt-outs to continue operating. Uh, those two opt-outs were for three years each, so. We are recovering from the, the twenty nineteen year of all the road infrastructure damage. And, uh, just finally getting, you know, the last of that repaired. Um, so yeah, Udyte Township really has some concerns with this particular project, on, you know, how much it's gonna be able to continue to maintain and, uh, keep the infrastructure in a safe manner for public use. At this time, I am finished with the concerns of the township, but I would now like to, by good management, Jerry, reset the clock and speak in the capacity as um, and, and joining landowner, um, for, um, Mr. Evans' property. Okay. Um, yes, we're genuinely, um, genuinely concerned about the flooding. Uh, it overflows in two different areas, uh, if, I have to just quickly find out. This is the east side of Lake Alexis and the southeast side of Lake Alexis. Uh, this is covered up by green, um, where Matt has some development plant, but it overflows into our field here and continues into farmland, goes this way, and goes right across the property this way, and goes into the property ownership cap. Uh, this past year, in twenty twenty, there was approximately twenty acres that did not get planted because of the high water. There was, uh, five to ten acres that was failed planting. And by that, I mean, we did get it planted, but it was, the soil stayed so wet that, um, the plants weren't able to thrive. And the, those five to ten acres, there was virtually zero or very little crop that it was able to produce. So, and if you're always gonna have the high water level, we will always be subject to, to that flooding, and really affect the amount of acres that we will be able to farm. Also, it doesn't have to overflow in order for us to be affected by not being able to farm. Um, just when the water level, um, gets close to our property, it, um, it's like it's saturating our farmland around that area, and at that time, it's already too wet in order to farm. Um, we are also concerned, you know, about litter, um, and the amount of, um, septic that the property won't be able to handle, um, and come on, onto our property and infect us in an adverse way. I guess there's a, a lot of concern here because, um, um, it, it's just gonna be a major, major flooding problem for us if the lake is gonna be maintained at a high level. I guess, uh,
Bob, do you hear any of that line?
No, you do not.
As I'm looking at this map, uh, I see where it drains out, I think to the east, and there's a big dark spot south of that. Is, is that also flooded ground?
Yes. Thank you. Yep. It drains from the southeast corner of Lake Alexis and goes right through that area. So yeah, for those reasons, uh, we really appreciate your time and consideration in this matter, but we, sure, would appreciate if you would unite us uh, when you, you, you roll.
Thank you. Come on.
Gary, my name's Bill Cat. I'm the next guy down the line behind Bob. And there is a very serious situation with flooding going on. Uh, that water level has to be maintained at a low level or a naturally dry level, wet level, you know, as the weather concerns go. But B is a holding basin. It holds sometimes with water level being high in there, a two-inch ring will flood our farm. It's two feet of water, and, and it'll last for probably a week, ten days, and finally go down. And then from the farm, it goes on up and down the road ditch like Bob said, and then there's a, there's a number of different places, my farm, the road ditch, the intersection down below is, they're all holding basins, and as it goes to the east, it also starts flooding neighbors down the line. And it, so we've got a real watershed disaster problem that we've been fighting for years. And back in nineteen seventy-six, there was litigation on because of landlocked water basins in the area. Um, this concern of, at the time, Roy Lucas was going to drain a, uh, water basin and went on to Joe Nedvitz, which Bob was not, and due to the fact there's landlocked water basins in that watershed, you cannot change water levels. And that's where the major problem with the water, I'm not against the project. I'm against the water change. And in visiting with a Shannon at DMN, BMER up in here, she discussed the fact with me that they were gonna maintain strict concerns with the fact that the water level in that lake cannot be changed. That it's gotta be a natural up and down level. If not done, the guys above are gonna have a problem, and the guys down below is my farm, and right on down the land. That's where our concern comes. A normal spring, I'll carry two feet of water on my farm. We're talking with snowmelt. I'll carry water for a month on the farm. I gotta park equipment out of the way, can't even take a truck to the farm. That's just normal. If it's dry, then it is bad, but if it gets above that, like two years ago, we're thinking, I guess, the extreme, that it's just longer lasting all the way around. Water gets within ten feet of our house, one kiss, that's what. So that's where the concern comes with the watershed, and that's what I voice my concern about.
Thank you.
Uh, Frank Karolcheck here, uh, speaking behalf of my dad and ourselves as Karolcheck Farms. Uh, we own land above and below. Uh, just like they said, I'll talk first below stream. Yeah, there's a big issue of water coming out through, uh, Bob Chop's, through Bill Cat. He's come through on the county road, and then goes through Hines. And where, last year, we got approved from you guys. We did this big tiling project. It took a while, it's about us, got through the light string, spent a lot of money. Did four hundred acres on our side, and Hines did about three hundred acres of tile to solve this high water, even surface water, when that lake's full, we got surface water. And we're coming back right now and finishing the project, as we admitted that we cleaned that waterway ditch and everything, cuz there's trees growing in it, and we're cleaning it out. But like this year, we had a five-inch drainage, even with the tile off, our field still got flooded. The water came out of Lake Alexis and down around. So that's our concern, that lake is full, it's gonna be a problem. And then also, when I was looking at his pictures, he was showing that the campground site is actually, you're gonna fill that water, or dirt, on the south side there of the, south side along the oil, so he's gonna small, make the lake smaller some portion, he's gonna make it deeper, but the bottom side is, is gonna be smaller, cuz he's gonna add dirt to it. Uh, now upstream, to explain the water, we own the, boy, it's not, the, used to be the Jammer Farm. There's two, there's a big dam up there that was put in to kind of solve some problems with water coming into Lake Alexis. That's our pasture. And then there, the Jammer Farm, we got two other swamps, lakes, uh, David Patton's here too, back in the day, they had to put a, probably put a burn in so the water wouldn't come down. Uh, David, uh, Patton's Brown, it come back through our trees, it's supposed to come around to Lake Alexis, and it's supposed to hold that water, so it gets to the level of come back around and stuff, and there was never a lot of drainage, almost battled back in the sixties and seventies about the drainage. So, that's, you know, it's to explain, so if that lake gets full and we get a big rain, my dam overflows, overflow, and then comes back around. And when we tried to hold water, I think Bill Cat has got ground, you still have a dam up above too, and we tried to hold water up above, so it comes down below. And we tried to hold water up above, so it comes down below. It's been a community that are trying to solve this problem. And like when we tiled last year, we left root for Bill Tack, he'd be everyone to come along and tile. He can hook in during like, we oversize the line for the permission and everybody that time. So he wanted to hook in, he had to come across our field and do it and stuff. So we tried work and we know that Lake Alexis is kind of a holding area of our big campground. I think that's my time. So thank you.
Would anyone else care to come forward?
Hello, thank you for your time tonight. My name is Matt Rumsy. My family and I live on Lot Two of Lake Alexis. And I would just like to take a few minutes to clean. So just a moment ago, when Mr. Karolczek said that Matt would be filling in the lake, he was referring to the dock area here. If you look close, it looks like there's one, two, three, four, five houses that would be in the slough. So that's what he was saying, if you're going to build there, you're going to have to bring in yards and yards and yards of dirt in order to build there. That's what he was talking about there. I know that that's true because I had my kayak in there to spray. As far as the letters go, if you look in your packet and look at the letters closely, the letter from Matt Churney, who's in charge of septic with the DNR, that is a big letter that says some projects in the state don't require preapproval. I spoke with Matt Churney yesterday. He said any commercial project absolutely requires preapproval before any construction occurs on septic plans. I also asked him and he confirmed that there is not an application in on this project at all. And he is the only septic person in the state of South Dakota. So you can imagine how busy he is. And tonight, I have no plans of bringing up the covenants, but since Mr. Evans did, we did some research and we spoke with Rob Clemish, who represented Chad Taylor in the suit. And Rob Clemish said, and I'm missing the words, there's a discipline or something of clean hands. So Chad Taylor was to become an owner once he completed his project. His project included draining water from the railroad to the east to the south side of this project. And that never happened. So there was no contract completed. And so therefore, his partnership in the land was not at the time of the covenant. He ultimately did gain property, or gain the land. But it was post. And the title company, the renter here, and Rob Clemish and a lawyer for their arms, all confirmed that the covenants go with the land. And then Chad, the only application that we could find on the one-stop shop at the DNR is for a de-watering project where without notification to me, the adjacent landowner, he put an application in to the DNR to build a burn and de-water half of my waterfront property and dump it into the basin to the east. About seven acres. And so in that application, the period of public notice ended yesterday. And they're having a meeting tomorrow. So I know I'm getting close to the end of my time. And I think all of this from our, I could sit here all night and tell you how 80 campsites and 30 homes don't belong here. But if you review this, you will see a third of it, and you can't see it in this picture, but heading off to the left, if you look in your packet, you will see that he has four or five homes and 18 campsites on a third of an acre on that eastern southern peninsula. And he has two septic tanks in that spot. And the administrative rule for South Dakota requires that septic tanks are offset 50 feet from the high watermark and the drainage fields are offset 100 feet from that high watermark. And that completely eliminates that. It's 45 yards at its height, 122 feet and its height. So all of this, in my perspective, sums up in Section 1809. The current ordinance amendments in rezoning, which states, "A recommendation of approval will not be injurious to the neighborhood or otherwise detrimental to public welfare as presented and testified as the applicant." And I contend that, the last meeting, several members of the board stated that they understood our concerns. They felt our concerns were valid. And if you feel that our concerns are valid, that proves this is interest to the neighborhood. And if you don't feel that it's interest to the neighborhood, I have a lakefront home, I will sell it. Thank you for your time. I appreciate your consideration.
Would anyone else care to come forward?
All right. My name is Jerry Trier. I was born and raised on a farm. And from the farm I was in, military. And from there, I did 37 years for one company. I appreciate all your farmers. I understand what you're talking about on the rainy, but somebody brought it up, when you get two or three into the rainy, it floods. And we'll back that without our farm. I understand that. My point is, everything that I've done, farming, military, my career, a great particular in my life. I worked for Matt Evans for three years now. And I know he is concerned about his property as I am. I take great pride in what I do. And he's a very hard worker. And I can see this project working.
Sir, could you restate your last name for the auditor?
Terbier.
Terbier?
T E R B E R.
Thank you, sir. Would anyone else care to come forward?
Hi, my name is Nicole Brandt. I just wanted to comment on the flooding issue that's at stake here. Mr. Evans is allowed to raise the level of the lake regardless of this commission's decision, so long as he applies for and is approved for the proper permit from the DNR. So I don't think that's a valid issue that should be addressed as to whether or not this permit is approved. Also, if they're not going to issue that permit, then that's his problem he's going to have to deal with down the road. The covenants issue is also another issue that he's going to have to deal with himself, with the landowner. There's many issues with the covenants as to whether they are valid or void, when they were created, who the landowners were, when they expire, those types of things. All of them should not be addressed by this commission. This is a great opportunity for a young entrepreneur to benefit the economy and tourism of Yankton County, specifically the Utica Township. He intends to place a well-in that will maintain lake levels. Don't believe it's his intention to flood everyone's property out. He'll run background checks for homeowners that are going to be renting or leasing these properties. And he has other campgrounds as well. And as far as I know, does not receive complaints on those. So I would, I would ask that the board or the commission approve this.
Thank you. Other public comments?
My name is Carrie Rumsy. And obviously, I'm saying a lot as he does. Just in what Mr. Evans has said in the past in Planning Zone Committee and in here, a number of times, he keeps talking about having a spacious municipal area. And on a four-gaider lake with, with the land that he has, I just don't see how spacious and 112, well, 80 RV units and 32 houses makes it spacious in that small of an area. So I think there's a little bit of contradiction in terms. I did speak with a couple of appraisal people. We did not have our house appraised, but I kind of let them know, here's the situation. There was a gentleman here in town that said, you know, this is kind of a unique thing. I don't know that I can say in a way if that will affect your house and your property value. The other person I spoke with said, absolutely, that is going to affect your property value due to the number of people coming in and out, sharing the same roads, as well as just having not, people that are like in and out all the time. And so also, it concerns me for the safety of my family. This many houses, these people being people that come and go as they please. They can also have, you know, you can't do background checks for them, but they're going to have friends and family to come with as well. So also, that will include a different kind of noise level. When you go from four homes that are there now on one side and a couple on the other to 112 units, whether it be RV or small homes, there's going to be a difference in our quality of life, the noise. So it will affect us maybe. And finally, just like I say, the roads, having to keep those up. And already, I know we're strapped for cash in the county as far as those are roads anyway. Now we're adding to the cost again in our area. So that is a concern for me. Thank you for your time. We appreciate it.
Thank you. Come on up, sir.
Can I use? I own 50 acres to the north of this project. I would ask that you come and approve it. I moved to the country because it's quite a peaceful landscape. And if you're going to put over 100 minutes, if you're three people per unit, maybe, possibly more, you might be anywhere from 300 to about 100 people on a weekend. Again, like it's been stated before, not spacious. I mean, there's 65 people in Utica. And you're going to quadruple, quadruple, whatever you want to use that population. You want to think in your vision, it says to preserve agriculture. Well, what he has is an R2, everything's around him then. So I would say I'd argue not to approve it. On the second part, Bob Rawls, my uncle, owns a quarter directly west to us. Section 18, my left quarter, my east quarter, section 18. He is against it. He does not, any undue traffic in his fields. He doesn't want to deal with any complaints if he has anything in agriculture. And like Frank has mentioned and some other people have mentioned, there is a blue line that goes from Frank's property line to your business property down to a lake on his, which crosses over underneath the road into Lake Alexis. And he's concerned with flooding also.
Thank you. Other comments?
My name is Dylan Tackey. I live in Leicesterville, but I farm with my dad. I support economic growth, but this is something that I don't support just due to where it's at and what's caused us IC due to this. I don't think, I need to go too much anymore into flooding issues. Just because that's a fact of our livelihood too, living there. I've got my kids there around us a lot. And he's his nephew. Three months out of the year, like Dad said, there's water sitting there. So you got to be very careful with kids around there. We try to put culverts in there to help with natural waterway movement. In 2019, actually, Corner 36th Avenue, north of our place, washed out, culvert washed out. Having this here is only going to contribute to that. So like I said, for economic growth, but not if it's, thanks.
Thank you. Sir from the hallway, come on up.
My name is Matt Aaronz. I own a house on the northwest corner of the lake. I don't have anything prepared, but I just wanted to say that I have opposition to this. And as I stated at the last meeting, my biggest concern is safety for the family. When you're putting 112 residents or places there and they bring their family, riffraff, whatever you want to say with that. Really concerns me to have my kids and possibly the grandkids and things in the future. When I bought this place, I was told there was only going to be a possibility of 12 houses built in the rest of the residency area. Fine with that, don't have a problem with that. Change it, change this to commercial out there, north of Highway 50, where we have none of that right now. Really concerns me because of the traffic. We're very considerate with each other, with farmers and residents out there, or with people that have no long-term residencies or anything there. That concerns me with the traffic and the safety of that being there. The other thing with keeping the water full, have a house on it. And I have to have an outside sump pump to keep water out of my house. So if he keeps it full at 14 foot, I'm going to have a continuous pump at my house. And I know that's probably legal for him to do, but that's a strain on our house and trying to keep it up. Since again, if you get a five-inch drainage, it goes right into our house. So this is our concern for that.
Thank you. Have you already spoken?
I did. Can I just tell a minute?
Okay, sir, come on up. I'll give you this 120 that he didn't use, some of that.
Okay, that's okay.
Go ahead.
The concern I've got is a normal spring runoff, rotate water over the road, wash north of my place. I've got to go down the road, dig the snow up so it stays in the ditch. If I don't do that, that's normal. If we get excessive, it just runs all over the road. It's washed the road up. In the last 30 years, I've probably had to go down here and got to replace and work up that road north of my residence eight or nine times. And it's a major, this water thing is very serious. And I hope you take it as a problem because in visiting with Shannon up there, she said they cannot raise that water level. It's got to be maintained. She said, if she can make the strip turns and you guys can do the same thing, I mean, strip turn from that water table. Because our farm is always running sump pump, just as much as ours. And if it's so flat, what happens is from that lake to rip across the road, the tracks are going to place. There's two inches of drop. That's all the elevation drop for this, or three quarters of a mile over there. So that's where it gives me a pounding factor. All the way to here, the whole way to Karolczek's over the same way. That's why, really why I didn't leave that one exactly. And thank you.
Thank you. Other comments? Anyone in the hallway care to make a comment? Would anyone who's already spoken care to speak again? Come on up.
Yes, with that, the water issue. There was another thing that we haven't talked about. The county owned a tidal line, drains like already right across from Scott Hughes's house. It is connected to this. And when it's frozen, like last year, when it's frozen, the water stayed over Scott Hughes's highway there to the tidal line. And since it's been about the water issues over the years, that tidal line just goes straight north to Utica, all the way around to Beaver Creek, that's where it drains out. And I just, nobody's talked about that tidal line. And I know that your, I would, the partners control that. That's, that's how big this water issue is. If you're raising that water table, like he said, that elevation's flat there, that unit area is flat. And you start raising the water, then you raise the water table for the whole area. And everything. Tidal line starts up. If there's a gated tidal line. No, it's in the county ditch. No, it's in the county, it's, it's county done to get rid of the water, to save the road. And then another thing, it cleans this lake out, you guys should be also worried as a county for rip rap on the laptop, what's that, three, uh?
430, 430.
430, I just know, you're not worried about, you know, once, when you get twice camps out there. And that's another concern, but you get, yeah, so you guys control that right now. I, you guys have to know that, because there's multiple swamps, you guys' centers that's got multiple swamps water, when they build up, they keep coming down. So I just wanted to, nobody's told you that yesterday, that you guys actually maintain some of this water with that pipe and that water table.
Thank you. Final comments?
Can I have one more minute?
You can.
I think you, I think you would appreciate this, this most if you drove by and take, if you just looked at this picture, which I commend Matt, this is 150 times better than the first picture he presented. But if you start to look at this and start counting, this is the peninsula I was talking about. 43 yards deep by 60 yards long. I tell you that the house roughly is 3/8, it's four homes. And you just look at this, it doesn't fit. So that's my concern. If this is, I'm for development. This in the lawsuit that went through with Chad Taylor and John Lane, there were 12 plotted lots and half were to be Chad's and half were to be John's. 12, not 112. And so I'm not against development. In fact, there's a lot of things, if he wants to develop, that are all there for him to do. He, he, there's nothing stopping him from doing that. I think there's a lot of things, none of us can stop him from doing. This doesn't fit. So I just wanted to, please look at this and get your little measure out of the deep end or come out and sit on my deck, you can see all of this on my deck. Thank you, thank you.
I'll wait one more comment, maybe even ask a question. I'm not against development and I'm not against them knowing dreams. But what about the 50 feet dreams that are in for this, before he bought the property? Just because he bought it, does that mean you guys have the right to cure this and you guys can argue? And then secondly, when he was speaking earlier, was driving speaking earlier, he stated that he had a vision to finish the project that he started. If he wants to finish the project that he started, why are we, why are we zoning this from 12 lots to 100 acres? That's my question.
Thank you. Final comments? All right, at this time, public comment is closed. All right, so since this, this is a first reading for this ordinance, in a couple weeks of our next meeting, we will have a second reading for the ordinance. Do any commissioners at this time have questions for the applicant?
I'd like to know where the water, what, what water's coming, the new water, to keep the level up.
Okay, so, um, I think there's a lot of confusion as far as this, this water. Um, I stated it many times the last meeting, that I am not here to raise these water levels. I'm not, I'm even happy with the water levels that they are right now, um, which is, uh, we've lost three feet of water in the last, uh, couple months here and around 10 to 15 feet of shoreline. Um, I'm still fine with that, that's perfectly fine with me. What I don't want is this lake to dry up and this lake has done that before. Okay, so anyways, um, I don't want that to happen again. If I build houses on this lake and this lake does dry up, then I'm going to be in trouble. People are going to be like, hey, we bought this and, uh, we bought this for the lake view and the lake is no longer there. If it does dry up once or however many times it's happened, I want to have the capability of sustaining levels to the point where it does not dry up. Um, I'm not talking about raising the levels two feet above what they are even right now. Uh, they're at around 10 feet right now, they were 11 feet a month ago, they're about 10 feet right now and they were 14 to 15 earlier this year, were five feet low. But you can't tell me that a two inch rain is going to bring that up that high and flood these people out, that's not going to happen. Um, I'm not going to, uh, control these levels to a point where there is no control over the rain. Another thing as far as what they're talking about, um, digging out the lake, uh, one of the things that was mentioned was shrinking the lake, uh, that is far from what I'm about to do. Um, I'm, I'm definitely not going to be shrinking the lake in, in any, um, the slough side that they're talking about on, here. So the slough side that they're talking about by the dock area over there, um, there is no water over there right now. Um, I walked across that and as far as the blue line that they're talking about, which was also mentioned at the last meeting, um, I do have aerial photos that I told, give me one second. So this right here is, uh, the current water from the west side across the road. If you look at that, uh, that is where the water is coming in on that side. From there to the driveway, um, let's see here, would you see the center picture on the right? Um, it is 400 feet to my driveway, to the very first water. Um, if you also look at the bottom left-hand corner picture, the, the land level where those trees are, those evergreen trees, is higher than 435 elevation wise. So as, as far as water getting there before 435 or anywhere else, that elevation is higher. So that's an impossibility before it overflows up to 435.
I guess I, the concern I have, and the question I ask, where, where the water's going to come from? You, you said you're planning to build a well.
Correct, correct, yeah.
And what kind of pool of water from that well would need to be deep enough?
It's, it would be a very slow.
In every well, I'd rather leave.
Uh, so it's not about filling the lake, it's about maintaining the water. Um, if it did start to get low, say the lake was two feet deep, uh, in the, in the shallows and three foot, something like that, that is when I would start and it would take a quite some time to fill it back up. It wouldn't be a fast process.
I guess I, I don't know, but I, I monitor your, your Asian systems in the area out there that depend on that water, from that aquifer.
Like if it was low, like you say, they depend on the water being there?
Yeah. Wouldn't be able to.
That's where you get DNR water, right?
Yeah.
If you apply.
So if I don't get it through your DNR, I don't, man, but there's a lot of farmers you've cut off, but you're being, yeah. And I'm not out here to say that, buddy. I, I just want to use, uh, the aquifer.
Would, would be, you know, approves those permits, they would have the capacity, they determine, and they have anything or something like that, and that's, I guess, they do it all the time.
So like the project, uh, this was already actually done. This was already, uh, dug out, um, to a, I think it's seven foot right now on the far, uh, west side in that slough, it's about seven foot deep over there. That was, uh, anywhere from 10 to 12 foot deep over there. That was all excavated, dammed out. Um, there was questions on a, uh, oh, I forgot. Uh, the water, or they said that I couldn't dig in there. And we're talking about the ag, uh, the ag assistance, that land is also wetland. Yes, I'm sorry. So, um, since it's zone R2, I can actually dig out that wetland since there's no assistance, which was also done in, uh, 1996 through 98. Um, they did get the permits to dig it all out and clean out the, the sediments and the reed overgrowth out there. One of the questions also, uh, from Bob Chapp was, uh, the erosion of 305. One of the things that, uh, I agree with is definitely maintaining those shorelines and especially next to those roads. Currently, um, there is a lack thereof on 305. Um, the water is, uh, subsided a little bit from 435, uh, but I do agree in aesthetically pleasing rocks such as quartzite, um, along those roads, uh, to do that and I will do all of that myself at my own expense.
Would you, would you buy them yourself?
Yes, yes, I would. I would do all of that. There's currently, uh, concrete slabs, uh, that will put on my shoreline, uh, out there and I do not agree with that. I don't think that they look good. Um, it actually states in the covenants that things applied on there need to be aesthetically pleasing and I don't agree with that. So I 100% would like, uh, that to happen, I think it would look great. Um, let's see here. Uh, there was also concern with septic. There are rules through the DNR. Um, you do not need permits through the DNR. You simply have a drawing of how everything's going to go and then the DNR approves that drawing. There is no application for septic systems. Um, you just show your project, the dirt worker shows his project and says, hey, this is what we're doing, this is how many feet we are, because you have to be so many feet from water, there'd be so many feet from a well and I need all of those standards. Um, another thing was measurement, as far as this being spacious, uh, the smallest lot out there is .2 without a house on it, uh, but the next one with the house on it is .8, I believe .86 or something. So I've actually done the mathematics on this. Okay, so, uh, let's see here. On the north, seven acres, if I put 12 homes over there, uh, that would be five homes, or no, I'm sorry, five acres with eight homes equals .625 acres per lake home. Okay, that's more than a half acre. I live on a half acre right now and I feel very far away from my neighbors. I feel that is a, a good distance. Um, let's see here. Four lake homes on two acres with a half acre of water and a half acre of land, um, which would be half acre lots on the next one equaling the whole 12. On the seven acres on the northwest corner, on the south side, there's 14 acres, which we have measured this at the last meeting, there was seven in the, at the top, almost seven, and then 14 on the south side. 20 lake area homes, uh, equaling to a half acre each, equaling 10 acres, uh, in accordance with R2 zoning, uh, and a half acre of land with included a half acre of water. Um, the remaining four acres would be a campground. Campground lots would be estimated 30 by 50 feet long, um, the same size as my other businesses. Um, 80, 80 lots at 30 by 50 equals 120,000 square feet. 120,000 square feet equals 2.755 acres, leaving 1.45 acres of cushion on this project. Um, each road will be 30, 35 feet wide, as I stated, um, to allow for two-way traffic. Um, there will be renters agreements, uh, and there was a concern about other people in the house. Um, it has to be all tenants on the application. It is not just a single person application. Um, trying to think what other questions people have, just to make sure I answer everything. I think the biggest concern was the water and, uh, like I said, it'll all be approved through DNR and I'm not here to flood anybody out. It's, it's just if the lake levels get, if even four to five feet lower than they are right now, they'd have to be like 10 feet lower in order to, for something to happen. Like that gentleman said over there, it's happened once, so it would be very rare. Even this year, which was a pretty dry year, it didn't dry out. The road was another, uh, concern. None of these roads will be shared. Uh, the road that actually, so it comes off of 435 there, uh, into the center house, uh, on that side, that road is not a public road. That road is not an easement. That road is my road coming off of 435 into, uh, that approach and that road is my road coming into those tall houses. It will, these people will not, uh, be coming in on their road, uh, going north and south on their side. It will be ingress, egress from that approach only, uh, over there. Another concern was saying that there was tall houses. If I just did this by R2 zoning alone, as I stated, I can do, if I just did land only, I could do seven on the top and then another 14 on the bottom equaling 21. If I did land and water, I could do even more. Um, so I, as far as 12 houses, I, I don't know where that came from. Uh, I think the economic development is very big to me. Yucatá has, um, dropped in population in the last 20 years from 120-some to 65 or 66, I believe, right now. Roads are being ground up out there. Um, I know I talked to Terry, she wasn't happy about that. I don't want to see you go backwards, I want to see it go forwards and, uh, this is one way I think that could happen. Um, 100% of this income is from outside sources, uh, from outside of town. So all of that is coming into Yankton, staying in the Yankton. I think it's very good for economic, economic growth. I don't know if you have any other questions, but I'm sorry, I tried to answer everything everybody said.
And this is just the first hearing. We have another, we will not be making a decision tonight. Any other questions at this point from the commission or the applicant? All right, at this time, I think this reading hearing is closed.
Thank you.
And is it November 17th? Thank you. We will have the final reading and a decision will be made that night. All right. Thank you, everyone, for sticking around. It's 10 o'clock, you're going to miss the news.
Almost a little.
Oh, am I reading it wrong? Oh, yeah, we did miss the news, I'm sorry. Well, it is what it is.
Good one, they do.
Yeah, we probably missed it.
Their pencil reading.
Oh, man. All right, well, travel safely going home. Moving on, item 13, Drainage Commission Support to Retain Drainage Ordinance. So my task at the last commission meeting, or I guess two commission meetings ago, was to, um, work with the drainage commission we have to discuss their thoughts on the future of drainage in Yankton County. So, uh, we had a, a meeting on October 27th, 2020. All but one of our members was there, uh, but I did talk to him as well and he is in support of keeping it. So there was a motion at the end and I'll just cut to the chase a little bit here. Uh, there was a motion to keep the drainage ordinance with revisions and to keep the drainage commission and it was an 8-0 vote. And if our other member wouldn't have been there, it would have been a 9-0 vote. I did clarify that with him. So a couple of, uh, comments that I found worth repeating, uh, actually, we had a, a citizen, a lawyer in town who got up and spoke in support of keeping. Actually, we had a citizen, a lawyer in town who got up and spoke in support of keeping it. She said individuals can go directly to court, and that's in our ordinance right now versus coming to this commission, which is friendly. So in her mind, it was more of a place to try to solve our differences before we actually get to court. And she felt it was a friendlier group of people than staunchly hiring a lawyer and just going to court and rolling the dice. Our chair, who was Casey Cruz, had a couple of unique observations. I had put together a map of eastern South Dakota where there's drainage ordinances and where there are not. And where some counties are starting to get rid of those. And he said, you need to look at the terminal water source. And Casey works with water all the time with, is it the state or the feds? The feds. That's essentially his job as water management. He said where you're seeing counties get rid of those is they have lakes. Whereas where you're seeing drainage ordinance have is they have flowing rivers. So lake wetland versus flowing rivers. So several flowable bodies in our county. James River is a big one, and of course, we're bordered by the Missouri on the south. So I thought that was a unique observation from the map that was put together. He did agree local controls best control. And he had a couple of observations about other counties he felt maybe had been inconsistent in their approach to drainage and lack of enforcement causing issues in their county. Whereas all of the drainage commissioners felt we had done our due diligence in trying to make a fair process. We serve as a communication conduit and the lack of litigation in this county since the ordinance has been in place as a testament to that process working. And at the very end, he made this comment, and he said, it's about people management, not necessarily just the water. And I thought that was a unique comment, and again, I want to give him credit for that one. That was not my comment at all. But that really is what it comes down to is it's a place for folks to hear their differences. And they can always go to court if they deem that is their best option. So all of the drainage commissioners have great comments, and I'm not, it's really late. I'm not going to go through all of them at this point. But that is the message they wanted to bring back to the county commission was they are in full support of keeping it. So if anyone has questions, I'd be happy to answer it. I know Commissioner Clemish came to the meeting, so he can certainly chime in with anything else that was said there.
Yeah, I guess one of the concerns that was also brought up and that can come around here is we do regulate, you know, tile, but we don't regulate anything. So this drainage, I mean, is that correct? I mean, you can.
That was one of the discussion points. So we probably tweaked in the ordinance if we decided to stay.
And and I'm fine with keeping it during the board is is a good group of people. We're very lucky. But I think those are the areas, and that's up to us as the commission to work on that is I can be the dirt scraper, round grain, whatever I want, no problem, wherever I want, but I can't deal with tile. And so maybe there's some more consistency that we need to do that. Also, we've had multiple requests for enforcement in residential areas, you know, out by the lake. Drainage walls, where we had all that flooding, people were wanting enforcement for people running septic on the ditch. And I think we need some serious clarification on what we're actually going to do and where. And so I think that's important. Other areas of the ordinance, I don't think that makes much sense is specifically calling out the size of the board in the ordinance. I I don't know if that's a good practice to do. You know, just like, you know, we recently downsized the planning commission, well, from thirteen to nine, and then now to seven. I'm in support of keeping what we have, but I I don't necessarily understand the point of having it written in the ordinance that it would be the size of nine. Also, from the past, it seems like the drainage commission is really having less projects come before them. Several years ago, we decided we were going to do a lot more administrative permits. And I guess I'm I'm wondering, you know, if we have a drainage board, maybe one of those should become important. How often does a board meet?
We're scheduled monthly, the fourth Tuesday of every month. The last few years, I think we've had an average of three to five meetings.
To your, to your question, Dan.
Yes.
Reason why you did some of those, they're ramped to the board because they were going directly to the blue line.
Sure.
Add all their, sure, all their paperwork, and it was a waste of our time as far as, and your board, I'll tell you, your board sitting up here represents, it's a good board because it represents about every part of the county. You know, you're, you know, you got to know all these, you got somebody from every part of the county to understand their area of the drainage.
No, and and that's one thing I gotta do, I guess, credit is, I was impressed by the knowledge of each and every person. Where one person is, you know, maybe not so strong, somebody else steps right in there. And my add up to you guys, you know, a ton. But one thing that I I did gather is I think everyone was in an agreement that it's probably time to look it over. Find areas that we can make it better.
And I've been honest with you, so the gentleman, John Madison, just gone off, and he's been, yeah. And now that we've had it five, six years, that's why I said we should revise, maybe change every day. But I don't think, it doesn't need to be strapped to re.
Absolutely, exactly.
It's got to be drawn, but, and we've done a few of those things that maybe you're already a big board, blue line, you don't have to, you know.
And that's part of our current commission right now. That's, that's in the ordinance right now that they don't have to do that. And that's why they felt it was important to to add the word with revisions as part of their supporting.
And one other thing that we've been running across too, and we won't, and this is where Davis County got in trouble, and they got sued very recently and lost, is they approved a plan. And then it came in, the plan was modified and put in, and you can't do that. If you, if you say this is where we're going to go, we're going to go with this size tile combined, and it comes out and you do something totally different. We're not following that. And that's where we could potentially get in trouble.
And I'll speak for the board. There's been times where we have red line or somebody in here.
Sure.
And they say, oh, we're gonna do eight inch. And as a board, we say, no, do ten inch. It's better to be oversized and then come back and tell us you only want eight inch. We have done that as a board and told them.
No, that doesn't make sense, but that's exactly where Davis County got into trouble. And they they lost that one, and we just don't want to be in that position. When we take that on as the county and we give them the stamp, we're the ones who are going to get sued and we're going to have to pay the cost. And, you know, Gary, speaking with him, he brought up the point that Brown County went and maybe we could use your guys' experience to help these guys with these tile, but it gets to the county and maybe we just, instead of putting our name on it and our stamp, maybe we say, acknowledge it. That's a good plan, you know, go ahead. And instead of, you know, passing it kind of like you did. And once we do that, we take the liability. So we use your guys' intelligence and your experience to get a good project out there. And then we move forward. Something to look at and you guys.
And on and over the years, and I know you have been there on it. Sure. There's been times where we had neighbor farmers, just like tonight with this other thing. They had issues back in the background about water drain previously. And the drainage board has done, John Madison will sit down and have coffee and donuts. He'd be surprised how many times the next meeting we tabled, next meeting, there'd be something resolved. Then there's times that we haven't had things resolved, but there's been, I was surprised how many times we did get it resolved by using that zoning. No, or any of that stuff, so.
I think that, just to kind of tee off, a couple of the main reasons that that drainage ordinance and the commissioning exists was actually, one, to mitigate lawsuits and, you know, prevent them from happening. And then, two, just like what, like some of the projects you talked about tonight. The the notification process of, hey, I'm gonna have this tile project, and so my house re- named, or says, oh, geez, I could jump on that.
Yeah, for example, our project last year, you'll have to, he has to wait for him to hook into that part of it, and wants to.
And you supersize it knowing that he might want you something.
Hey, because he commented to us because we didn't build it, he came to us and said, hey, I wouldn't mind hooking into that.
Yeah, had that not happened, we wouldn't have sized the pipe according to you.
Yep.
So there's, there's that and benefits. Those, those are the two main, I guess, reasons that I remember why that, why we've been developed it. I certainly think it could use revision by by now. And I think that was the original intent to run with this, and let's tweak it as we go. You know, any way we can take liability out of the county, I'm supportive of it and.
And then that's one of the things that the conference, Don and Jerry, I, where's that, where the attorney's there. Not this, if you can't do anything with a drainage ordinance that state law doesn't already provide for. So you guys, by taking this on, you are assuming liability. But it, you know, it sounds like that hasn't been a problem with us. And I'm I'm in support of that, the drainage commission reviewed the ordinance and can't change it.
Well, thanks for hanging around for that discussion, too. Let's move on to item fourteen, guidance for variances.
Yeah, I I ask this to be on the agenda. We have quite a few variances coming up. And I guess I'm looking for guidance on what we, as a county commission, laws of work adjustment are gonna approve and what we aren't gonna approve. If we are not gonna be approving a certain type of variance, I think it might be helpful just to tell those applicants right off the bat that probably not applying for. We've had quite a string, and I know when Don and I were on the planning commission, we, especially with these agriculture, you know, mock requirements. I don't ever remember one being denied. And you, Don, we approved every single one of them, and I'm not, I'm not throwing stones here, but now we're not doing it. And I'm getting approached by people, you know, asking why, and I don't have an answer. They're wondering if they should have bought or applying, and I can't get an answer for that.
And certainly, I think, and I meant to call Turner County and figure out, because we had a farm forum, and there was a a planning member from Turner County who said they usually get variances out like candy too, and they lost the lawsuit. And now they're, I believe he said there were five key things that a variance and a you answer no or yes to any one of those. I can't remember which way it went. We can't award the variance, so there's very strict rules. And it's not that we're not going to approve certain types of variances, say for twenty acres or two acres or this or that. It's, does there a situation warrant the variance?
So for, for example, we had the night we denied those variances, we had two, we had, you know, Gino variance and the Schlitz variance. And if we follow nineteen oh seven. I guess I I'm just trying to wonder why, why we approved one or why we didn't. Where, where was the difference and how are we putting that? In reminding and finding a fact that if we're gonna follow nineteen oh seven, they should do it for all. It appears to me that we were just not approving yellow mock requirements on, if somebody wants to build a house.
I think that's kind of premature because we've only denied one thing.
Right. And we should be following nineteen oh seven, but then I'll just, as far as that, that particular one. I'll tell you what my justification was on on why one did approve and the other one didn't. Some, a lot of them that are approved are like nine point eight acres. They're already mounted for me, and they actually want to grow on size. I want to encompass more, you know, I'm gonna further my performance. I'm still under the twenty acres. To me, that's, that's a very important proof. But when we blatantly want to take three acres of productive agriculture ground for no reason that would satisfy anything in a various process, then I have to, I grant you that. I think the moral of the story is we should be following this and find ourselves not following it.
Sure. All the variances of the, if we go back through nineteen oh seven, no variance that we've ever done.
Well, I think that's what Turner County backed out to.
But I mean, and we we've set the precedent, so I I couldn't make it to the one you guys went to, but I watched and sure you said you researched, we did a hundred and twenty of those variances, and now now we're denying one of this. And people want to know why and and therefore not gonna not gonna prove them, which you probably shouldn't, you should probably let them know before they apply and spend, there's something fundamentally wrong with that state facility.
Nobody, I shouldn't say nobody, the majority of people shouldn't, if they don't meet the ordinance, assume they can just come in and get a variance or build another. We need to do a much better job. And again, if we are continually offering variances for the same thing, change the order.
Well, I mean, that was one of the things that proceeded is, you know, or at least I remember maybe, I remember wrong, but it was no more variances until we changed the ordinance.
That was Randy Blaine.
Well, I I don't know who said it, but.
Randy Blaine.
Changing the ordinance is easier certainly than. I, so what, what guidance are we supposed to give to applicants for the variance?
If they feel they need the qualification, it's second thing. That's what I was talking, I mean, I don't know what, what we can operate, we can't, somebody. We cannot go into a pre- determined motion, so we can't tell somebody, you know what, that variance has been passed, no problem.
No, no, I realize that, I mean. If we're not gonna, if we're not gonna approve, you know, certain type of variances, there's no reason. Uh, but you answered my question.
All right, last item, item fifteen, discuss section seventeen nineteen, county commission amendment and rezoning duties. And I put this on the agenda because there's, there's been a lot of talk in our community about what the county commission can and can't do. And I just wanted to point out that in section seventeen nineteen, the county commission may amend, supplement, change, modify, or repeal any regulation, restriction, bounty, or enforcement provision established in the zoning ordinance or the zoning map. The county commission can initiate changes to the ordinance. The county commission shall forward a copy to the proposed, of the proposed changes to the planning commission for public review and comment pursuant to eighteen oh nine. Upon receipt of the comments from the planning commission, the county commission shall provide a notice. According to section two thousand three, the county commission shall thereafter either adopt or reject such amendment, supplement, et cetera. If adopted, we need to publish, et cetera, et cetera. So the county commission can propose changes to our ordinance. And I think it's something we need to seriously consider. Like I said, we already had a citizen tonight alleging that the county commissioners are doing things they shouldn't be doing. And I am all for just having that public, public discussion at the county commission level. If we want to make changes to the ordinance, we propose them here, we discuss them, we vote on them, we send them to the planning commission for their review. And I would certainly welcome any thoughts on that.
You know, after reading this, I I would tend to agree, you know, I think I think it is planning and zoning as they go through and see applicants and things like that, and variances that we see over and over. Certainly should be able to take it upon themselves or or propose some changes that make sense to come up. Where the commission. Where the commission has specific changes they wanna see, I think that's what seventeen nineteen is here. And I, I, I mean, I agree, I think we need to consider, consider this because with the, the proposed changes to amendment five, and the, the first round of changes to article five, and the first round of change to article five. There was a disconnect between the county commissions, commissioners, and the planning commissioners. And, and I do think, I know myself, I put a lot of thought into this, and I have an idea of things that are acceptable to me and not acceptable to me. And I think we all know the rule, everyone of us said up here, and on that issue such as this, I see no reason why we can't have that discussion versus having planning and zoning do it the same. Here, we already know kind of what we want, you guys swing for it, and if you don't, get a rightful tonight. And you didn't have that. And about the bad taste in a lot of people's mouths, and I understand that. But we have the authority to do so, I would, I would support going that way.
And?
But also, you know, that's our responsibility. We don't think they got it right, that's what we have to stand up and take the responsibility. No. No, I agree, that's, and some of, some of the things that have come up maybe before that, some after that, I tried to just jot down while we were talking here, but, uh, you know, one of those is our responsibility, we're the elected official, we're the final day, we give the big bucks to do so. So, uh, certainly think that we can, we can own it. I know I heard multiple times, um, from different people and from planning and zoning members that they feel it's a top-down approach to tell them, these are the changes we want, and we wanna see this and that, and, and you know, that may be so, and so, again, that's why, why I supported it to us in seventeen nineteen. You know, I've heard, uh, it's seated at planning and zoning meeting that, that they're volunteers at planning and zoning, and can't be expected to have all these special meetings, and putting all this time and effort and work into making these changes. And that's pretty, um, again, we make the big bucks here, so I think we need to take that that upon ourselves, and, um, you watch the, the farm forum. You know, that really kind of, to me, sealed the deal a little bit on my thought on this as I'm looking back at it, but there were a handful of planning and zoning members there. Sherry and I were asked to stand up and field questions. For a forum that was, that was intended for planning and zoning to receive discussion on on proposed changes. Now, I certainly felt after that, that, that burden, that's what it is, it's on our shoulders to do, we, we have all the final say in that, and I think maybe we do just have this discussion here. We have to send it to planning and zoning for review, and they make, uh, comments, and we incorporate some of what they say, and maybe we don't incorporate some of what they say and, and move forward, but we've got to.
Any other comments?
I will tell you that this probably will will happen with, uh, with power ordinance. Unless planning and zoning wants to have it happen, I have to do some things and work with Gary on some of that, I think. Wouldn't, wouldn't see any reason why we couldn't utilize this more often, where we see clearing issues.
And, let's see, public comment?
I've got just a few more things to say, Sherry.
Oh, yeah, go ahead, Gary.
Just to reiterate some things on Veterans Day on November eleventh, uh, Hy-Vee always has a free breakfast from seven to eleven. Not just in Yankton store, but all of their stores throughout their, their region. And free to the veteran, and they've been doing that for several years. And also, the other thing is that, uh, think about the veterans that are deployed. There's veterans in about a hundred and thirty different countries as we speak. Thousands, Germany, Korea, Kuwait, England, and, and so many more. And just think about those people, and, and if you can't do anything about the twenty-two veterans that commit suicide every day, you can pray for them. And I ask that everybody just take a moment some days and, and just think about those twenty-two veterans and, and pray for them. So, um, happy Veterans Day early, and think about all the, there's POWs yet, and there's a lot of missing in action. We have one in our family. He, uh, he's, we, they, and he never will be found, but anyway, uh, thank you so much, and, and enjoy Veterans Day.
All right, thank you, Gary. Coming up.
Just a comment, it's for our best life. And you're discussing changing the zoning ordinance. What ours and all the other businesses have done to that. If you're gonna make substantial changes, I think you either have to have a special meeting, get it done earlier in the day so people can actually beat it. Changes that have been discussed are substantial. Thank you for keeping your grace for it. Adam Smith said, the government is invisible hands that keeps an economy moving. And that grace word is something that works very well in this company, because people are able to sit down through these problems without going to court. And that is a very profound thing that we all have found, being able to work through these issues without having to sit in front of the judge.
Thank you. And I don't see anybody else. So, public comment is closed, commissioner updates. Anyone here to share?
I thought this was quite a, that we did not discuss any changes to the ordinance, the night we discussed, shall we discuss them, just to be clear.
Yes, thank you. No changes to make. So, I'll, I'll start, and I'll try to run through this quick. Uh, we did have a meeting on trying to figure out how to reduce our juvenile detention costs. And that is slowly moving forward, we're trying to get some, uh, members of our community together, the schools, um, et cetera. Have a meeting in December to step one, one more step down this path. A couple of the other cities across the state have done this, it's called J D A I, Juvenile Detention.
Alternative Initiative.
Alternative Initiative, thank you. Um, so that's kind of working in the background. Um, and next week, I was, I was asked to look into this conservation position that the county funds. Next week, November twelfth, which is Thursday at nine thirty, is our regular conservation board meeting. Um, and I had talked to two members of that board, and I will be there to discuss this position. Would another commissioner like to come and discuss this? Thursday, November twelfth. Nine thirty morning at Brian Pams.
I could do that, uh, anybody else?
We can only have two of us go.
Okay.
I can go too.
It's nine thirty.
You got it.
Better not.
I thirty.
Oh, I thought you had, uh, Jim, Jim.
I, 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 we had to cancel it.
Oh, okay.
So, Dan, you're gonna go?
Yeah, we moved that to December. Yes, I moved.
Hey, I tried to call you on that, but did not connect. Um, air purification system was ordered for the jail. Uh, the glass has been ordered for this building. Care's Act funding, Patty has been just doing a stellar job. We have gotten, we have received some checks, and she submitted a bunch more. And she submitted essentially all the twenty-five thousand dollars over one point five million, or whatever that was. Uh, I thought it was one point five. Oh, yeah, yeah, so they'll, but we still have November payroll in December, so we're looking really good, and she's, um, it's, it's not a fun process, I will tell, tell you, everybody deserves to, or should take Patty out to lunch for that one.
That is what I actually. What I understand too is, uh, you know, that there's other places that doesn't mean funds, and they don't use them all up, that the state wants to use them up, so if we have additional.
Yeah, I, I spoke with Paul, and we, we have a few dress, the D D E. Yeah, if anything like that is ready to go, we're just gonna drop it down and do that stuff we can always use with the mandants, the police. Beer, masks, hand sanitizer, because we don't have it. So, which next, kind of what I'm asking, if there's another department.
Yeah, yeah, and Paul's been working through our department head meetings, working with the other ones on that, so, uh, Mike did send an update out, FEMA, grants, et cetera, about five hundred thousand dollars he has sent in for that as well, so, um, things are slowly moving along. Anyone else have anything?
But you're saying, actually, with that, it was that, some of the comments are made over the last couple of months, transparency. And I think maybe we should somehow address, uh, items that keep the public informed. We never met.
Well, you have the, the reality was that with a zero battery.
I have no video, I never had a discussion with Bruce, I have no idea what he's talking about.
But transparency is a big, uh, popular word that's all around. We should probably challenge each other if there's issues in how transparency, or how we compete on the county better overall. We should, we should maybe, uh, address that.
And I would say ourselves too, and I don't, you know, it'd be nice if, if we could get an email once a week or something.
Well, I get a huge of, of doing labels covertly behind, even that stuff.
Send it to Gary and.
And I try to call, and oftentimes I don't get answers. So that's tough too.
But a female works best for community reasons. I would appreciate that.
You know, I, I prefer phone calls, so.
Well, I'm not, I'm not bringing this up for phone calls or emails, I'm just saying. There are ways we, we can be more open to this discussion.
Absolutely, Dan, absolutely.
Maybe add the, add a little more clarification on what was asked of us, get back to the planning and zoning, and what we did, you know, maybe that would result Mr. Councils.
Well, you know, something like that would have probably been better in a special meeting where, you know, everybody. It's I, I was not involved in that.
But you did exactly the same thing with the first round of amendments. You talked to Joe about them, you sent them to me and asked for my input, it was exactly the same thing.
And guess what we did? We had public meetings for the planning commission for months and months and months.
And then Joe tried to have a public meeting with the, with the second round, and that didn't work, so I don't take kindly to the outages.
You're talking about, you, I mean, you have something to say, say that.
I just did. So at this point, I believe we are done, I would entertain a question. Yes.
Well, I had a meeting, um, I think it was no, um, I had a meeting about, um, developing some of those Utica properties. Uh, it's actually pretty beneficial, I think, and hopefully we can get that going. Uh, one of the things I noticed when I talked with several of the realtors and, uh, some, some of the builders is there's a huge difficulty in finding properties to build houses on, especially if you're gonna go, you know, under the, you know, the two hundred and fifty thousand less, um, that's a big concern, there's a, a lot of the area around Yankton is tied up. So, maybe that, that's something for economic growth, I'll leave it on that, Don, is we really need to be looking at places near Yankton that can be, you know, because most of them there are very expensive lots, and it doesn't make sense to build a home unless it's three hundred, four hundred thousand. And that's not, we're selling those, but we could sell a lot more of the two hundred thousand if we could find spots. So, uh, that was pretty interesting, uh, I attended a NACO training on the twenty-first and twenty-second, it was online, and that, that's a really good period. It was interesting to hear some of the counties, um, where new legislation had been passed, where they have to deal now with detention, and they didn't know how they were gonna do that. Um, but also, uh, infrastructure was a big deal, and I know we get down on ourselves sometimes, but we are in a lot better position than some of the other counties. When we have these breakout groups, other counties and other states are, um, not talking about replacing bridges, they have arid bridges that have been sitting idle for fifteen years, and they're worried about how to get them tore down before they fall in the river. And, uh, so, I know we get down on ourselves, but I think we're doing a, a lot better, and certainly there are others in country that are struggling worse. Infrastructure's bad everywhere, so, that's all.
What, Gary, you should, uh, need me to allow, uh, grant writing?
Correct.
I didn't see a reply, I'm curious, you have a letter, I don't know.
There's a link on there that if you're interested, anyone that was interested in, in attending, you could just click on the link and sign up. I can resend it to you.
No, I, I've got it, I saved it, uh, I guess my thoughts on that, looks like it's, it's all on somewhere, the internet. And there's a cost to those classes too, if I, it's like five hundred seventy-five dollars or something.
And I did send it out to all the department heads also, so.
I don't know if all departments need to go, but I think we have a couple that should be, if they have skills, they should be encouraged to take that.
Now, if you guys could talk about this, the bus that had an annual, must have had a body unit though.
Yeah, I believe so, I think it's an annual.
On it, there's, you know, it doesn't pertain necessarily to every department, but there's a couple of people who really have it in the right grounds.
My, my daughter is working for a session where, that you know, a lot of green writing support. She said, oh, it's absolutely amazing. The difference between that big grant writer and somebody that's just working, you know. That's where I get the money, so we, we should try to identify one or two people that think that's part of their description, I guess, the right grant.
You know, this year, it's running, right? We do use this, you know, that's kind of the special.
Motion to adjourn. I have a motion by Joe to adjourn, do I have a second?
I do adjourn.
All right, motion is second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose nay, motion carries, we are adjourned.